Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners. We are tasked with having a public hearing here, and it is over two, four, six, eight, ten items. I will read the, we'll read the public notice for the record. And of these 10 items, if you would like to make a comment on any of these 10, I'd ask you to come forward. When I open the floor up, give your name and address for the record. After we have the public hearing, it will start here, well, we're starting right now at 6:15, but we will close the public hearing right before 6:30. We'll reconvene for our regular meeting. If you still want to make a comment, we'll have another portion of time that we'll open back up for citizen comments on really anything of your choice pertaining to the city. So I'll read this. The Board of Commissioners of the City of Mount Juliet will conduct a public hearing to consider the following on June 23rd, 2025, at 6:15 at City Hall located at 2425 North Mount Juliet Road. And I will read the items and ordinance to amend the Mount Juliet Code of Ordinance. This is Chapter 8, Building and Buildings Regulations, Article 3, Property Maintenance, and ordinance to reapprove the preliminary master development plan for the reserve at Tate Lane, formerly known as Lynn Haven Phase 3, approximately 18.5 acres of property at Tate Lane, map 73, parcel 22, 22.07, 22.12, 22.13, 22.14, 22.15, and 22.16. The third one is an ordinance to adopt the property tax freeze program for elderly, low-income homeowners in the City of Mount Juliet as authorized by state law. The fourth is an ordinance standing soon. The corporate boundaries of the City of Mount Juliet, approximately 15.0 acres of property located at 2335 Central Pike, map 76, parcel 53, located within the city's urban growth boundary and plan of services. The next is an ordinance to amend the land use plan for property at 6235 Central Pike, map 7653, from mixed use to multifamily residential. And next is an ordinance to rezone approximately 34.14 acres of property at 6235 Central Pike, map 76, parcel 53, and map 97, parcel 13, from Wilson County R1 and Mount Juliet RS40 to RM16, PUD, and RS30, PUD, and to adopt the preliminary master development plan. The next item is an ordinance of the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, adopting an annual budget and property tax rate and sewer rate for the fiscal year beginning in July 1, 2025, and ending on June 30, 2026. And the last item in the public hearing is an ordinance to amend the land use plan for the property known as the Courtyards at McFarland located at 5025 Old Lebanon Dirt Road, map 77, parcel 1, from mixed use to multifamily residential and Parks and Greenway. The public is invited to attend. So if you would like to make a comment on any of these 10 items, I'd invite you to come forward to the podium and give your name and address for the record, please. We recognize for three minutes. Can we get your name and address, please? Yes, sir. Don't worry. Thank you.
Mount Juliet, Tennessee, previously known as Lot 3, Lynn Christie subdivision.
Perfect.
This lady helped me, and on the following day, June 10th, Adam Metters called me and told me I need to go to General Sessions Court, take it up with him. I couldn't believe it. It worked that quick, and I appreciate it. Here's my concern. Where I live, as I told you before, the church over there cleared all that land. It's draining right down on my property. Thank you for your help. And now you're coming right back behind me to do additional whatever. The God made that, that land in a V. The V hits right behind me. All the water's coming on my property. The, the, the area where I used to be able to mow with a zero-turn radius three times this year, I've had to pull it out. The silt, the mud, and all that. I have to go to General Sessions on that. My concern is, I'm not in the city. I'm in the county. Have 420 feet of, 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 of septic tank line behind me. Told me I needed 380. We put 420 in. Everything's fixing. Come right back on me again. Everything comes down there to my house, to my property in a V. There's a natural creek and a natural spring. There's a natural gut now, or where everything's washed out. And my concern is, what can I do as a property owner to keep all of that from coming down on me? It's all coming down on me, buddy. I don't know what to do. That's my concern. Am I under three minutes? I'm finished. I, I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do. I don't know where to go. Somebody can come see. They can look at the spring. Everything used to be free and clear, running down to there. And now it's full of sediment. It's full of mud. There's all kinds of stuff washed in from where the church went back over there. And he told me they had pulled all their plants. They moved all their equipment out. It's full of filth and sediment and mud. And you, if you, I invited all y'all last time to come to my property and walk. You can walk. You, it's gonna be nothing but mud. And with them coming in behind me on Sonny's place, well, Mr. Tillman, um, I, I don't know what to do. I don't know what recourse I have.
Okay.
And that's it. I got 20 seconds.
Thank, thank you, sir. Shane, is, is this, this is something I'm sure is being considered in the stormwater. Is this, can you can get, get with the gentleman here real quick before we get, get going? Make sure we're all on the same page.
And this is the first time I've been, second time I've been here, and I'm 64 years old. I don't like, I don't feel comfortable. But you told me.
Thank you, sir. You did, you did a good job.
Oh, thanks. Who's Shane?
Shane's right here. Oh, we got Mr. Forkham. Better, better choice. We're upgrading. Is that right, Shane?
And thanks to that gentleman who commented next day.
Hi, I'm Lori Gossett. I live at 121 Southeast Springdale Drive, which I know all of y'all probably heard about my flooding constantly over there. But my issue is your 4.44% tax increase. Oh, can y'all consider not going so high? Because I'm just 63, and I've been on disability since 2008. Only make $25,000 a year. It's just me. I'm single. And it might not sound like a lot, but it's over $200, and it is a lot. And because I called, and they said the freeze is 65 and under, but when you make the income I make, it, it's gonna be rough. If y'all can consider starting out slow and moving up gradually to the people like me that will have to budget it in between medicines, doctors, and I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. I think, I think we, we got the budget on here for second reading tonight. So I think we've got some, some cuts and stuff to look at tonight. So I encourage you to stick around.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, Mayor. My name is Greg Gamble. I'm representing the applicant for items 10A through 10E. And I'd like to speak for just a minute or when those items are, are up, if that'd be all right. Unless you'd prefer I speak now, but if it's all right with you, I'd like to speak when those items are.
I'm sure, I'm sure there'll probably be a call for representation at that point.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Bloom. I live at 146 Denny Drive. I'm also concerned about the property tax. I've lived here for 37 years. Love Mount Juliet. Great community, quiet, nice place. Of course, when I first moved here, there was no property, city property tax at all. And since we all live in Wilson County, it was a surprise to me, why are we paying a city property tax and a county property tax? We're all in the same county. But that, that was then. And my, one of my concerns is, we also have probably one of the highest sales taxes in the country. And you know, the last few years, inflation has been pretty high, which means every time inflation goes higher, the sales tax goes higher, which means there should be a lot more money coming in. So I mean, I don't know where it's going, how it's being dispersed, but you would think that there would be a lot more sale tax money to fund a lot of things. And I'll give you an example. I bought a new car about a month ago. The sales tax was $2,000. That's a lot. That's a lot of sales tax money. So I, I think that's something we should take into consideration. Try and keep that property tax as low as we can. I know there's a lot of projects, you know, that people want to do, but I think sometimes you gotta keep it, the cost factor into it. You can't do everything at once. You know, you do, you do a little at a time. Because if you try and do it all at once, because what's gonna happen next year? If we're gonna raise it 200, 300% this year, you know, what's it gonna be next year and the year after? So anyway, that's my concern, that we try and keep things at a reasonable level.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Chip Bailey. I'm Larry's neighbor. I live at 140 Denny Drive. And I'm sorry, Larry, but I disagree. I'm on the side that says we need to raise the taxes, and we need to raise them now to make up for the lost ground. And I know that Scott apologized at the last meeting, and there's been a lot of people looking backwards, saying we shoulda, and we woulda, and we coulda. And that's all fine. And, and I agree, decisions could have been made differently years ago that would put us in a different spot now, but that time has gone. And this is now, and this is where we're at. And when I look at our fire and police departments, especially police, with the proactive policing that they do with the license plate readers, with keeping all of those dirt bags out of our city, you know, I think it's fantastic. Well, they're underfunded and undermanned, and I want to feel safe at night. I want my kids to be safe. I want Mount Juliet to have city beautiful with a full crew, because I don't like driving down Lebanon Road, coming into Old Hickory, and into, you know, Donaldson and those areas. And immediately, you know you're out of Mount Juliet. There doesn't need to be a big sign that says just left Mount Juliet, because you know it. There's trash on the ground. There's broken glass on the sidewalk. You're not in Kansas anymore, Toto, right? And I love Mount Juliet. I love this town. I love what it gives to our citizens. And if we've got a pony up, then it's time, you know? I understand there's a lot of people on set budgets, and, you know, hopefully you'll find a compromise. But if you've gone 1,000 miles in the wrong direction, do you keep going the wrong direction just because you've been going the wrong direction? Or do you put on the brakes and turn around and make a change of direction? And admit, I made a mistake. It's time to fix it, and that's gonna hurt a little bit, but we need to fund these departments. We need to stop losing good people, and we need to keep the quality of Mount Juliet at the level that we all appreciate. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. It is 6:28. We're gonna close the public hearing. We will reconvene here at 6:30. We'll have a portion for public comments at 6:30 is when we start the 6:30 meeting as well, so. Good evening. It is 6:30. Today is June 23rd. I'll call the meeting of the Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners to order. We do have a quorum present pursuant to City Code 62210, so we'll proceed with the conducting of the business. I just want to say thank you for being here tonight. On behalf of myself, Mayor James Manus, Board of Commissioners and staff, we're pleased that you're here tonight. We have at the basket, some by each of the doors, is an agenda. This will be kind of our guide for tonight, though I'm about to propose some changes to the agenda. And that is our first item that's on the agenda, is the agenda itself. I would start off by, I'd like to remove 9B from consent. I'll say, we just, without objection? All right. 9B is removed from consent. I would propose moving 12B and 12D to consent. 12B and D. B and D. Hearing no objections to that, we'll move 12B and D to consent. I would like to read 10D before 10A. 10D is the land use amendment. Any objections? 10A, it's the land use amendment. Move 10D before A. D is in Doug. Yes, ma'am. All right. Hearing no objections to that, we'll read 10D before the others. And then the last item, I'd like to move 11A, the budget, to the heel of the agenda. The heel, the end. The very end. Okay. All right. Well, I'll make a motion then to move 11A to the heel. Got a second? Questions and comments?
What's the reason?
Just like to clear as much off the agenda as we can, because it's, we're probably gonna have a long, a long discussion on the budget.
Well, can I amend that? I mean.
What, what are you thinking?
To move, have 12C considered after 11?
Yeah, I've got no problem with that. Is there any objection then to hearing 12C after the budget on 11A? So that would mean, because since we're gonna move D to consent, that will mean we'll do the budget in the referendum. Okay. Hearing none, then we'll set the agenda as published with the changes here. All right. Our next item is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask Mr. Tim Bryant, sir, with the, if you would come forward to the podium and lead us in the invocation, and if you would also please lead us in the pledge of allegiance and with the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and he's been gracious enough to do this for us tonight.
Good evening. Let us bow our heads. O God of heaven, Lord, we thank you simply for the gift of life. We thank you for life, health, and strength. And now, Lord, we ask that you be in the midst of tonight's proceedings, that everything is done decent and in order. Lord, we thank you for the community of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, a blessed community. Continue to bless and give the leaders guidance and, and vision. Lord, bless everyone that is here under the sound of my voice. Bless our country. Bless our leaders. Lord, we thank you for your grace and your mercy, and we ask this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen. If you will join me for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Next item is approval of the minutes. We have one set from June 9, 2025. Is there a motion? Have a motion. I heard a second on this. Any questions or changes? All right. I'll in favor of the minutes. Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The minutes do pass. Let's see. We're at the point now in the, in the meeting, just, I'll just read this out. It says, in order to conduct an efficient business-like commission meeting, let's adopt a few rules for this. It's primarily just to keep the meeting moving and in order. We're gonna go to citizen comments, but during this time, if anybody wishes to address the commission, you may do so pursuant to Chapter 2, excuse me, Article 2, Section 220 of City Code for up to three minutes, although we ask that you wait until the mayor's recognized you. Also, we ask that you observe these three simple rules at the beginning of the presentation. Please give us your name and address. Excuse me, give us your name and your address. Please address all the comments to the mayor. If it's necessary for the mayor to ask somebody to address comments, however, the Board of Commissioners is under no obligations to respond to questions. The third is, please avoid the use of inappropriate language, profanity, or any other inappropriate conduct. Once citizen input portion of the meeting is over, the commission will proceed with the remainder of this evening's agenda. You're welcome and encouraged to stay and watch the meeting. And again, thank you for taking the time to be with us here tonight. And with that, I'll open up, I'll open up the floor for citizen comments.
Hello. Good evening. I apologize for not getting this on the agenda and taking this time. My name is Sean Glover. I'm with Volunteer Bank at 11400 Lebanon Road. I have Tim Bryant with me and Tina Burris. We're here tonight to share with you all about a city event that we are all participating in on June 28th. In the City of Mount Juliet, we are blessed to have our very own hero astronaut, Mr. Barry Butch Wilmore. And we will be honoring him Saturday, June 28th, at Charlie Daniels Park. There will be a presentation, some, some treats from the city. There will be some food trucks, cool treats, music, entertainment. And then Mr. Wilmore will speak and tell us about himself, his trip, and his testimony. He is a wonderful human being, and we are all just very blessed to be able to have this opportunity. I know we've all spent a lot of time praying for him and him and his partner, their safe return. They are now home with us, and we would just really like to invite the public to give him a great hometown welcome. You can speak about Barry. We'll have t-shirts too, so if you get there early enough. Mount Juliet is retiring his jersey, his jersey number 54. And then Mr. Mr. Wilmore will be here to meet and greet.
Very good.
Yeah, and I think Sean has pretty much covered it, but.
Need to get your name and address one more time.
I'm sorry. Tim Bryant, 555 Low Grove, Mount Juliet, Tennessee. Tim Bryant. But I think Sean has covered most of the agenda. I would just like, like to add, I grew up with Barry here in this great community of Mount Juliet. The people who were born here, we call it the mountain. So I was born and raised here on the mountain, and Barry is a great individual, a great human. I'm the county director with the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and each week for just about all of the nine months he was gone, our, our students in our before-school huddles had time of prayer for Barry. The kids sent videos to him. I have one group that I meet with every week over at WA Bass. They sent videos to him, and he was very appreciative of that, and he's a big supporter of FCA. So if you're not busy from 11 to 1 on Saturday, put it on your calendar and come out, and let's celebrate our hometown hero. Yep.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Bailey. My address is 2012 Stone Brook Circle here in Mount Juliet. I'm, I am a transplant of about 10 years, so not quite local, but, but here long enough to be familiar with it. I've lived in quite a few metro areas that have experienced growth, and, and so I'm here to comment on the budget part of it as it relates to taxes and, and making our budget work. I think the thing that stands out to me is anytime you hear a 400% increase, that's gonna spark fear. And I can tell you that I didn't know exactly what that 400% increase meant to me financially until I went back and looked at my tax bill. I think one of the keys there is that it feels a bit reactionary, not like, like in my own life. When I need to make changes, they tend to be incremental and not multiples. And so the thought came to me is, it seems like public safety is a big part of our budget and one of the major drivers, and I don't think anyone here would, would argue that they want to be less safe. And so it's a valuable thing in our community. But I wonder, based off of the sales tax comments, if, if maybe there's an opportunity for us to look at what we tie that budget to. And so the thoughts that came to me, like I said, coming from metro areas like Atlanta and lived in Southern California, so like, I've experienced good growth and, and maybe less good growth. I'll just put it that way. So my thoughts were, is if the major drivers of the need for that budget, if we were to tie to that, would it be, would it be more sustainable? So in other words, when new homes and businesses are added, they add people to our community. They add cars to our streets. They add needs to our infrastructure. So those are the things that, and I wonder if, if there's an opportunity for us to look at, how do we drive revenue from, from those things that support the things that created the need? So in other words, if more people creates the need for more public safety, how do we tie things that drive revenue to that? And so I guess that, that's kind of cued back to the whole sales tax mist, right? I'm assuming that was a, a budgeted increase that didn't happen, and now we're, we're, we're kind of looking for ways to do it. So what I would, what I would ask that you consider, consider assessing fees to partially mitigate the expenses and reduce dependence on sales tax. And that would be fees and assessments based off of new development. Okay? And I know we're, like, there's a talk of slowing growth. I'm not anti-growth, but I think being able to fund it from the things that create the need are a good idea. And so that would be my ask. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, guys. Y'all miss me?
Name and address, please, sir.
Rocky Lee, 16604 Central Pike.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. I'm just here to clear up the last meeting. Everybody knows I'm a passionate guy. I've got 25 years into parks and rent, blood, sweat, and tears, guys. I've, I've got my head up, because I think I'm leaving you with a better park system than you got when I was here. And I did it all for the citizens. I've done everything for my staff. And for my staff and my department, I'll fight anybody. But I just want to open up. Commissioner Heffner, Commissioner Malley, thank you so much for reaching out. I appreciate that. That went well. But the ones I'm really here for are the citizens. It's been overwhelming. I've had citizens reaching out to me from all over. I didn't know I had so many friends. But I want to thank y'all. Y'all are the reason I did this. And it, it touches my heart that so many people have reached out to me, wanted me back. They say, Rocky, don't do this, don't do this. But uh, again, guys, I just felt like, you know, I brought a lady in, Melinda Troutman. I brought her in for a reason. We needed her at Parks. She is needed at Parks, guys. And I'll just ask you to trust me as your parks director, twenty five years. This lady right here started out with finance a little over two years ago. Six months in, deputy city manager and city manager stole her away, took her as their admin, admin. And it said at Parks, not at Parks, at City of Mount Juliet, it takes seven years, seven years top out. They topped this lady out in her first year. Nobody gets topped out in their first year. That's how good she is. And when I saw that, I reached out and said, hey, I need you at Parks. We're growing. I need somebody that can take care of policies. I need somebody that can do legislature. I need somebody to write grants. She met all those and she did everything I asked her to do. And just to pluck her out of the air and pull her out and take her away, guys, that's not about the budget. That is not about the budget. I don't care what you're saying, it's not about the budget. That's what got me passionate. I wasn't mad, I was passionate. But I'll come in again to apologize if I spoke out, I turned or anything last meeting. That's not me, I'm better than that. But uh, there's twelve other, you know, the city manager said he picked her out because it's the last creative position. That's not true. I've got a list right here of twelve other positions that came out at the same time or after her. None of them were picked out. I mean, just look at it, guys, look, the truth's there. There's going to be one woman tonight that's going to be picked out without a job. That's not right. I don't care where you're at, what country, I mean, if it was in Russia, they wouldn't be doing that. But I'm just telling you, but I promised a lot of people, and I'm asking you, I'm putting it to your court. I'm going to rescind my resignation if you'll consider it. It's all up to you. About to feel like I've got more work to do here. But again, I promised these people, they made me promise I would rescind. I'm rescinding, so that's up to you. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Name and address for the record, please.
Brittany McGregor, two forty Bass Drive, Mount Juliet. Um, I'm not a speaker, so I'm going to read. Um, I have been a resident in Mount Juliet since nineteen ninety six. My husband and I chose to raise our family here when our journey into parenthood began in nineteen ninety eight. One of the things we've always loved about this city is the way it's maintained its small town feel despite tremendous growth. We've always appreciated the cleanliness of the city itself, the friendliness of the people and the willingness of the citizens to lend a helping hand to a neighbor in need. In addition, our children were blessed with incredible teachers throughout their school years here. And as a family, we have always joined, enjoyed the parks, especially Charlie Daniels. We have spent countless hours enjoying the trails and playground at Charlie Daniels. We have numerous memories of time spent on both the tennis courts and volleyball courts. We love this community and we love the Parks Department. Because this community is more tight knit than most, I'm sure a lot of you here know that I am Ambria McGregor's mom. For those of you who don't know, Ambria passed at the age of sixteen in twenty twenty two. Many of you in this room have offered love, support and encouragement to me, my husband and our son for the last two years. Many of you continue to lift us in prayer. I can't tell you how thankful we are for that. Rocky Lee and the rest of the team are at the top of those who have held our hands in this absolutely heartbreaking road. Rocky is a naturally born leader, a person who truly cares about the people in the community he serves. He is the face of Mount Juliet Parks. He is a very heartbeat at its center. To let Rocky go would be a tremendous mistake. Rocky did not resign because he's tired of doing his job. He resigned because of principle, because he's standing up for his people, his department. One of the people he was standing up for is Melinda Troutman. He was standing up against cutting the position of an assistant that he needs by his side to ensure success. Prior to Melinda's position being cut, Rocky offered to give up his job, his salary. He even offered to stay on board and train the next person in line to assist with whatever the parks may need. You still voted by three to two to cut Melinda's position. Please do the right thing and give her her job back. Mount Juliet Parks are expanding, yet you're removing key positions which will prevent success. In order to maintain the quality of parks that the city of Mount Juliet is accustomed to, we need the right people in place. Rocky Lee, Melinda Troutman and Jennifer Deekman are a few key components of that team. I'm fully aware that trying to figure out the budget can be tricky. I'm also aware of how important the parks are to the citizens of Mount Juliet and how much our community needs the apartment, Parks Department to thrive. I am here to request that Rocky resumes his former position. He is a true leader, passionate about his work and the people of this community. Please allow him to come back and reinstate his position. I, along with multiple citizens of Mount Juliet, are hopeful that you will do the right thing and put Rocky back into the role he was meant for. Please do what's best for our community, bring back Rocky. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello.
Hello, I am Chris Midgett, for those of you that don't know me, um, ten twenty seven Posey Hill Road. So I came here to um ask you guys to beg Rocky back, but he kind of beat me to it. So um, he's, it would be wonderful if you guys let him resume his position. I um run Give a Little Christmas. I've been doing it since two thousand twelve and we've helped over seven thousand kids since we started. Now, most of you guys know about Give a Little Christmas. Well, Rocky was one of the first people that let me do a Christmas party and it was over at um Charlie Daniels Park at the Community Center. And I've been doing events there since I started the charity, just about raising thousands and thousands of dollars. We went from helping fifty kids to helping nine hundred and thirty kids last year. So um, we need Rocky and we need Melinda. She's been so helpful in everything that and the whole process for the charity and since she started with us. We do this event called Craft Fair Before Christmas in um September, October, and they are a key role to make that happen. I don't know if I could do it without them. And also I want to speak for Justin. I love Justin, he is wonderful. He um helps us and helps promote those events that we do over at Charlie Daniels Park and the Community Center. Without Rocky or Melinda, I don't think that the parks would be near what it is now. And I really, really hope that you guys um hire him back and keep Melinda and keep Justin because the kids in this community get a lot of help from Give a Little Christmas and Big Brothers. And um, because of Rocky and Melinda and the Parks Department, that is a whole lot of the giving and um Justin for the whole lot of the promoting. So without them, I'm afraid it would be a little bit harder for me to reach all the, to fill all the needs. Sorry, I had a thing written, but I'm I'm winging it as always. Um, so anyway, if any, if you guys would consider taking Rocky back and uh keeping those positions, that would be really, really a good thing for the community and the children that we help every year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Angelise Adams, uh, one nineteen Belinda Parkway. Um, I'm here again uh requesting a zoning ordinance amendment for ordinance twenty thirteen dash seventy regarding um tattoo shops. Um, I know you all heard me last time, so I'm not going to go into a bunch of numbers again. But you know, I am a small business owner that is affected by this outdated zoning law. And I know I'm not the first to come to you guys with it. And if nothing has changed, then I'm sure I won't be the last. Um, so I just really hope that um one of you commissioners would be willing to um stand up and volunteer as tributes to um help me to by sponsoring this zoning ordinance amendment. Um, I really appreciate that. Otherwise, I might be back again. All right, uh, thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, sixty eighty five Central Pike, Mount Juliet.
Thank you.
Harold Cheatham is my name. And about the development is right next door to the property at uh sixty two thirty five. I just think they need to uh to wait until the exit ramp comes in up the road uh at the interstate. I mean, the traffic on Mount Juliet Road is terrible right now. And I've got an acre and a half right next door and when it pours down rain, it's like a river runs through my backyard. So after they start digging dirt over there, no telling what's going to happen. And I've already got some foundation issues with my house and when they start blasting, it might roll on off the hill. But I really think pulling out at Pleasant Grove Road is dangerous enough anyway. And they need to do the infrastructure unlike we did at Providence. I've been there since two thousand. So all we got to say pretty much.
All right, well, thank you for your comments, sir.
Good evening, my name is Melvin Gatewood. I stay at one eighty six Karen Drive and I'm here to speak about Justin Beasley and the great job he does. Um, Justin has spotlighted my organization, Operation Continue Service, and has spotlighted the causes that I have. Uh, if anyone has seen me walking up and down Mount Juliet Road with several flags, but most more so the United States flags to bring awareness to veteran suicide and mental health issues. Um, before Justin spotlighted my cause, um, no one had ever, uh, people had seen me, but he was the first one that came out and covered the story. Um, I want to thank Justin for not only spotlighting what we're doing for veterans, but also letting myself and others be seen in this community. And I want to thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jake Porter, uh, Harrod Civil two zero five five North Mount Juliet Road. Uh, we're here tonight, uh, myself and the developer Steve Griffith are here representing uh the Reserve of Tate Lane. And just wanted to let y'all know that you have any questions or comments later in the meeting, you're here for uh representation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Steve Griffith with sixteen fourteen Tate Lane, Mount Juliet, Tennessee. And um, I wanted to, I've got nothing on the property tax, but I would like to say I'm pretty proud of our city. I saw a report, I think it was on Channel Five News, talked about our police department. I think we have about close to half as many police per thousand, or maybe it was sixty percent per thousand as Metro does. Um, but I've got businesses in Metro and I call the police and it could take hours, could take a day for them to get there. If if someone has already been uh assaulted and the assaulter has left, they may make you wait six hours. If you call the police in Mount Juliet, they are there within, maybe before you put the phone down. I mean, it is, it is truly unbelievable. And it just makes me think we run our business very efficient. That's why I think we're one of the best car washes out there. But I think our city is very efficient. So I don't know what's going on in property tax, I hadn't dealt into it. But I will tell you, very proud of the efficiency that we see in our police department. And it always rolls from the top down, so somebody's doing something right. But I know our police department is amazing compared to the rest of the areas that we have stores. So uh, there should be some kudos there and they should definitely be recognized for their efficiency. Because remember, they're literally running at sixty percent, I think is what it was of Metro, but they are just unbelievable. So thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anyone else? Okay, we got a couple.
I'm Randy Parks, one eighteen D West Drive. I just wanted to tell the commissioners, I was here on June the ninth, uh, speaking about the uh Tate Slane Reserve. And I want to thank y'all for not approving or doing any changes to any connection in the in the D West. Uh, need to keep that road safe as we've talked about and everything. And it uh, I've even noticed in the last week or so, more bicycles on our on our road and it's a hilly road. But I did want to tell the commissioners, I hope no one changes it tonight, slips it in or anything like that. But uh, it uh, it definitely needs to be stayed safe like that. I mean, these, I had to talk to one of the young boys on the bicycle. He was going up the wrong side of the road on the hill right in front of my house. And people fly down through there, they're doing thirty, I mean, forty, fifty miles an hour. And if someone had come over that hill, no telling what would have happened. So uh, just wanted to thank the commissioners for listening and uh appreciate your job you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Larry Bloom, one forty six Denny Drive, Mount Juliet. Uh, I just want to make a little further comment about the taxes. When we first moved here, Nashville was nothing like it is now. But then they brought in the Titans, all these other things, built a football stadium. And and you know, the place started jumping, hotels coming in and every country singer has built a bar or place down there somewhere. So they're making a lot of money. So what does the city do? We need a new football stadium. They got one football stadium, they want to build another one. Well, who's going to pay for it? The citizens of Nashville. They built a baseball stadium. They built, I don't know if they built a soccer stadium or they had one. And uh, so all those things look good on the surface and it's great for hotels. It's great for all the bars and all these places they're building, they're making a ton of money. But the people who live there are not making any money on it. Their taxes, of course, over the last few years have gone very high in Nashville. Um, what I'm getting at is we don't want to go that same uh, down that same rabbit hole. And we're a long way from that, but I'm just saying, when you want to build something or fund something, you got to make sure you really need it and and think of the future and what it's going to cost you to run it, maintain it, hire people. Because once it's in there, you you own it and y- again, you're going to be looking for money to uh to fund it. And I read something the other day that said uh, uh, Mount Juliet, uh, I think we were the fourth safest uh city in Tennessee, I guess, which is, which is really good, you know, uh. Uh, these people were talking about feeling safe and uh, I've always felt safe here, you know, compared to when you read the paper or see TV or something about Nashville, it seems like somebody gets shot every night. So uh, in that respect, I think um Mount Juliet, the police and everybody are doing a great job keeping us the way it should be. All I ask is watch, be careful what you wish for. Sometimes you you got to be able to afford it. You can't just grasp at every, you know, new gadget or uh thing that comes along and and expect, well, we'll just pass, we'll just pass it on it and they'll pay for it, you know, well. Once that gets out of hand, you can never put it back in the box, you know, so it's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else for citizen comments? All right, seeing none, we'll close citizen comments. I'm going to make a motion that we reconsider the agenda. Is there a second? Okay, we got a motion and a second to reconsider. Any questions or comments, I'll be happy to explain. Uh, non, non C is under consent and it I'm thinking Commissioner Hefner is going to want to make a a change to that, so we probably need to pull it from consent. Okay. All in favor of reconsidering of the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. The agenda is going to be reconsidered and I'm going to move without objection that nine C being removed from consent. Any objections? All right, well, all right, that's the only change we'll make to the agenda at this point. So our next item that is on our agenda as we follow it is commissioner reports and comments. And I'm going to recognize Commissioner Giles for his report comments.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we had a ribbon cutting yesterday for the Woodridge sidewalks and almost every department of the city was represented there. We had a great crowd. I think you saw, you've seen some of the pictures on channel two. I appreciate all the city employees coming out and the elected officials that got to come out. The mayor was there and and Commissioner Malley and myself and and it was very hot and I understand why some didn't come. Um, it was very hot. So it was very successful, so thank y'all, everybody that got to come out. Uh, thanks to all of you who have come out tonight and and voiced your concerns. Um, and especially all those who have emailed me and 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 talked with me about, especially about the tax increase. I hate taxes. I just absolutely do. And um, when I was here before, the best I remember, I didn't vote for taxes. But the level of our services today, we have to increase our taxes to be able to provide the services that we as the city have. And I believe this board is trying the best they can to keep the taxes down. So we we truly are trying. Um, I'm trying to answer all the emails. Mondays on the days that we have commission is very, very difficult. I mean, we don't really have an office down here. We work, I I run a business in the city. Um, so if I didn't get back with you today, I do plan to get back with you on your emails. So thank you again, thank you for your support and your encouragement. I truly appreciate it. Mayor, that concludes. Mayor, that concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Trevette, you're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for everybody that came out tonight, as well as people that are online. I will also, Mayor Exacel, Commissioner Giles had also mentioned about the, the communication when it comes out to all the residents that have reached out to me. There's been some long conversations. Again, I've done a lot of homework these last couple weeks. It is hard decision, you know? I mean, when we look at what we have, there were some folks came up here tonight that talked about, you know, the safety, the growth, slowing down the growth, I heard, speeding up the, you know, the infrastructure, and, you know, every time that we have these meetings, there is somebody that comes up here that wants something, right? And we're trying to listen to every single one of you, whether if it's road improvements, if it's better parks, if it's, you know, city beautiful, if it's slowing down the growth, but then at the same time, if we slow down the growth, we got to be able to help compensate that for somewhere else. So it's a give and take relationship here, and we are doing our best up here, at least I, I mean, I'm talking to the rest of these commissioners and the mayor up here, I, I know we're working a whole lot with staff, and I appreciate all their times taking on all of our calls, because sometimes it's redundancy, even if, for myself, you know, I've, I've talked to our finance director, and sure enough, she literally just called the phone with, you know, like two of the commissioners and the mayor, or vice versa. So it's, it's great that we're all going back and forth asking these same questions. Obviously, these last couple weeks, or these last couple days, excuse me, I've actually, you know, got an opportunity to have, you know, our chief, our deputy chief of police and fire and public works all get together and just post out, you know, like that was something I think that we're all missing here, which is to share exactly what, you know, these department heads are doing for us, where, you know, where we were in the past to where we are today. And it's important for every resident, whether if you've been here for the last 25, 30 years, or if you've been here, you know, just two or three years, it's important for all of us to know where we were and where we came from, and what is our vision for the city. You know, it's, it's all about community strong, you know? I mean, I've, I've, I've heard that many times from our past chief of police, he always talked about community strong. Heck, the man wrote a song about it. My nine-year-old son knows it by heart. So it's, it's great that, you know, that when we hear these things about how we want to raise the value of our, you know, community, but sometimes that is something that we've done as a commission here, whether if it's back during COVID, we kept our taxes down low, we did everything we could to keep them low for the folks that were losing their jobs or the folks that were, you know, just working from home, things were slow back then. So passed commission, voted on it, kept, you know, kept it low. And yes, I, I guess we could have, you know, last two or three years, we could have looked at raising that, but at the same time, we start looking at other opportunities for additional growth, whether if it was sales tax or if it was other development. So again, it's a give and take relationship, and I appreciate everyone that's reached out to me. It's great that we can be able to go back and forth and not get yelled at. So sometimes social media, though, people hide behind keyboards, and I will still throw out my number, because I do want to talk to you, I understand you're upset. I got to pay my bills just like you do, and I also got to be able to pay these taxes just like everyone else. So on a positive note, around the corner is Independence Day, you know, I love blowing up things, I love where it's community pulling together, so 4th of July, Circle P Ranch, you guys may hear about it, a lot of advertisement, I think it starts at 5:00, if I can get a nod from somebody, they're, oh, gates open at 4:00, and then the event starts kicking off. And then, of course, I have one for my community the next day, so it's all about having fun, being safe. I just asked two things, one is, as adults here, if we could just be respectful of our neighbors, and also, last thing, which is, make sure that our kids, if they're out there playing, think about their safety as well, so make sure that, you know, we are all adults, we want to make sure that our kids are safe, so if they're lighting something up, be there, make sure that we may have proper safety glasses on, or, or just, you know, certain types of PPE, personal protective equipment for anybody that doesn't know that acronym. But, but again, our, our first responders, they do a great job, and it's all about making sure that our, our city's strong. So thank you all for everything, and Mayor, thanks, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hefter, you're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I appreciate everybody coming out and watching online. A lot of good feedback from citizen comments this evening and also two weeks ago. Absent tonight as our city manager, I just want to wish him well, speedy recovery, I won't go into any details, but wish him, wish him well. So want to address one of the citizens that mentioned contributions from new, new developments. We, we've been doing this for, I don't know how many years, since, I think, 2015, voluntary contributions, as we call them, and when I joined this, joined this board back in 2020, the contribution per doorknob, as, as I refer to, was $2,500. We're now in, well, we're, we're now at 75. So we went from $2,500 per household or doorknob to 7,500 in just a four-year period of time. The, the issue, and we've got, we've got research, we've got studies that back those, back those numbers up, so we can defend them. But the, the issue where, where that plays into is, is specifically in the budget. We don't see those contribution dollars as we're, as we're adding the road improvements to the budget. You'll see the expense item, but you won't see the millions and millions of dollars that are, that are sitting there, that are obligated by these developers to pay the city until the developer actually writes the check and pays the city. It's only at that point it's booked as revenue, but, but you don't see, you, you don't see it anywhere. We've got millions of dollars that are committed to the city, but it's nowhere, it's not, it's not in the balance sheet, it's not, it's nowhere, it's on a spreadsheet, my understanding. So, you know, and that explains some of the surprise increases at the end of the year when you see these revenue numbers that far exceed our proposed revenue numbers, it's because you have these voluntary contribution dollars that are coming in from these developers that we place on them through the PUD process. So I just wanted to point that out. Also too, same thing, I ditto what you guys say, I've, I've got, received a lot of emails and phone calls. I, I'm going to pick up the phone, and I'm going to call you if you want to discuss the budget, that's something I'm not going to, I mean, it, it's just, it's a long, it's a long conversation, and I've called some gentleman back this evening, or earlier today, so I will get to everybody's emails and respond, I've been out last week on vacation, so I will respond to your emails. I'll either email you back or I'm going to call you, that's my commitment. Also too, on the tax freeze, so important thing to note, we are, I'm sponsoring this ordinance, it's a state law today, so I'm asking this board to adopt state law for the first year, the income maxes at $50,530, but the second year, it jumps up to $63,470. So that's the maximum. So this is meant for low-income elderly, and elderly being defined as 60, 65 and up. Last but not least, well, a couple of things. Rocky Lee, I support Kenny Martin hiring him back. I'm going to go on record making that statement. I hope, I hope my colleagues at the board feel the same way, but he is very passionate, I'm sure he's, well, he regrets leaving the way he did, but I'm in full support of Kenny Martin bringing Rocky Lee back as our parks director. Also too, it's, we're going to be up in the hundreds this, this week, so please be mindful, before you get out of your vehicles, check your back, backseats. If you have cats, dogs, kids, please, check your backseats before you, before you exit the vehicle, appreciate it. Thank you, I can close my report.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Malley, you're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you. So I put some charts out on social media and in emails to help you kind of understand and educate you what, what we're looking at and why, how we got to where we are. So I've tried to be as transparent as possible, as I can be, I've, except for today, because I got busy preparing for the meeting, I've responded to every single email and text and social media. I scan social media pages for a long time, every day, looking for things that I can respond to and help set the record straight. This is a chart that I got from finance, I added the text to it, to kind of give you an idea, our biggest budget item is public, public safety, and as you can see, that's police, fire and ambulance. And like the comments earlier, we love them, we have a safe city here, you know, the, the fire's always there, the ambulance, but it costs money. It costs 30 million a year, that's only for personnel and operations, that does not include capital. And as you can see, our current property tax rate at 11 cents is 3% of the budget, 3%. And our second biggest item is capital roads and sidewalk projects. So you can kind of get an idea of our expenditures and why there, there's so much. Nobody wants to raise property taxes, ever. None of us do, but keep in mind, we live in the city as well. Whatever they end up at, we're affected as well, we have to pay them as too, we're, we're not exempt. So I've also gotten tons of emails saying, please don't raise the property taxes, but even those people that don't want them raised at all, I think you have to admit, 11 cents is ridiculous, it's just ridiculously low. So you talk about growth, we were at around 7%, that has slowed to around 2.44%, give or take. So you talk about growth, it has slowed. The, we get, so I don't know if you know, but property taxes were started about, what, 12 or so years ago, for the purpose of the fire department, because the county totus, they were no longer going to provide services. So we, that rate was set at 20, 20%, and it was dropped to 16, and then later we dropped it to 11. So these drops have just resulted in loss of revenues, I'll just, bottom line, that's what it results to. So in 2021, fire was moved to the general fund, their budget just has increased, and as we grow, naturally, there's more demand for public safety. And so, but as you can see, practically half our budget now, so it has to be funded. The, we have been, okay, can you switch slides? We've been riding a sales tax wave for, in order to keep the, keep your taxes low, so yeah, should, they should, I think they should have been raised by now, but nobody, again, nobody wants to raise them, so we've been trying to keep them low, but as you can see, sales tax has slowed, it's still up, but it, but it has slowed. And the, the sales tax rate here in the city cannot be raised anymore, it's at the limit, is how it can go, as far as what the state approves, or however that works. So talking about a property tax rate, it started out at 68 cents for first reading, it was dropped to 54, and then at first reading, three people on the board agreed to start at 44 cents. I thought that was highly premature, because nothing had even been discussed yet, and that number didn't come as a recommendation from finance, that was only rock bottom. So this year's recommendation for the budget also came in with 3.5 million in cuts, I think we're, we're going to talk about some more cuts, about three, 2.9 million more tonight. I don't know how much time I got left, so you'll see more cuts that are coming. Let's see what else. Here's my opinion, even though fire, which includes EMS now, is in general fund, my opinion is, the property taxes should be applied to where they were initially created. So to operate fire and EMS is 12.2 million a year, and that's just personnel and operating, that does not include capital. 54 cents generates 11.3 million, so as you can see, that 54 cents is a pretty good jump, but even that's under the 12.2. 44 cents, which passed it for first reading, and that doesn't necessarily mean that's what it's going to be by the end of this meeting, but 44 cents was approved, that only generates 9.2 million. So you can see, at, at least as far as I'm concerned, how that's not really being applied, even though they're in the general fund. I know it just, to me, if we don't help fund that, even though it's in the general fund again, it puts burdens on other departments, you know, when, when they try to do things. So the assessments are coming in again next year, they were done in 2020, I think. So, and again, also, our building has slowed during COVID, our building permits were in the 600s, now they're in the 200s. So we're, it's not generating the revenue that it was generating. So, and even it, people say, well, all this growth, you know, where's the money? Well, property taxes at 11 cents barely moves the needle, it just barely moves it at all. So anyway, I just wanted to help educate you, and so you kind of know where we are and, and how we get to this point, and why we're here. So that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to start out by saying, I've, I've heard from a lot of you, seen emails, calls, I've tried to get ahold of everybody, I know I have not gotten ahold of a few, there's a few of you out there I still don't know, but I guess if we get a budget passed tonight, I'll be able to give more concrete answers in my, to the questions on this stuff. Questions about sales tax, about the revenues that's brought in, Mount Juliet's rate is 9.75, that was adopted by county-wide referendum to set it at that rate, that is the maximum rate that, that you can be, that can be levied in the state of Tennessee, minus two counties, which get a special rate for tourism, even higher, but we're not that. Of the 9.75%, seven percentage points of that goes to the state of Tennessee, 1.375 goes to the school system, so a penny and 0.375 of a penny, however you do that with a penny, goes to the schools, and then the remaining penny and 0.375 cents out of a dollar comes to the city of Mount Juliet. So that is what makes up the majority of our funding is sales taxes. I get a lot of questions about fees, can you, can you stick it to the new people that are coming in here to cover all the costs, or the developers need to be paying more? Well, problem is, is, as a city, we operate under, we have to operate under state law. I can get really creative in various ways to raise money, but they might not necessarily be legal, and we do have to operate within the bounds. The one thing the state of Tennessee has given us as a board of commissioners to set by majority vote, without studies or referendums or anything else, is a property tax rate. I suspect that was done years and years ago, so that you, the fine folks of Mount Juliet, would hold us accountable for our decisions up here and directly reflect upon that, but that is the one thing that we get to vote on by majority vote to set. We can always look at more fees, try to justify things, anything that we're missing, we can collect on the development inside the city of Mount Juliet. But one thing I do want to point out, not this, not this current year's state of city, the year before, I'd pulled the numbers for the rate of development in this, Mount Juliet, if I remember right, was making up about 10% of the development going in the county, and the unincorporated areas was developing twice as fast. That unincorporated area puts a load on our infrastructure as well, and we don't collect any fees from that. So we still have to handle that infrastructure as well, we do everything in our power and ability up here to try to make it as equitable as possible to fund everything that we can to keep the cost off you, and I think the 11 cent property tax is a direct reflection of us trying and attempting to do everything we can to keep the cost as low. Heard some stuff about rehire people, or the board of commissioners only has two hires by law, the city manager and the city judge, so that's not a, not a situation we can address here tonight, but just wanted to highlight, and Commissioner Malley alluded to the number of cuts, before we even got into the budget process, we had had 11 different positions that were not backfilled in this previous calendar year, and we've had another two other positions that were combined together, so effectively eliminating about 13 positions that we were funding. So we've been making efforts to cut costs and streamline in every way that we can, and still maintain the level of services. and still maintain the level of services that we provide. And I think you'll see that continue to reflect here tonight. So with that, our city manager is unfortunately not able to be here with us tonight. But normally I recognize the city manager at this point, but at this point, we'll just go right into the business of it. We'll go to our consent agenda. We've got nine A. And nine A is an ordinance to amend. The city of Mount Juliet Code of Ordinances, Chapter Eight, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Three, Property Maintenance. The next item that was moved to consent was twelve B, which is a resolution supporting a grant application for the implementation of safety improvements on various roadways that were identified in the City of Mount Juliet Safety Action Plan for the Federal Highway Administration Safe Streets, our SF four A program grant cycle. And number twelve D, which is a resolution to authorize and appropriate funds for an study of the cost associated with hazardous duty pay supplemental benefits pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated section eight, thirty-six, two twelve. Is there a motion for the consent? All, I heard a motion in a second, so all in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any, any, or nay votes, abstentions? The consent agenda does carry. The next item is nine B, an ordinance to reapprove the preliminary master development plan for the reserves at Tate Lane, formerly known as Lynn Haven Phase Three. Approximately eighteen point five acres of property on Tate Lane, map seventy-three parcel twenty-two, twenty-two point zero seven, twenty-two point one two, twenty-two point one four, twenty-two point one five, twenty-two point one six. There's a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on nine B? Commissioner Malley, recognize ma'am.
Question for our representative. As far as the drainage, when you start, do you always, I mean, it may be a requirement, I'm not sure, as far as stormwater runoff, do you do the detention ponds first to give the water somewhere to go? In order to keep, because I know that one issue, that property on that, that we had talked about before. So do you do that first to contain the water so that it's not a, doesn't affect other properties?
Jake Porter, Heritage Civil, two zero five five, North Mount Juliet Road. Yes, we do. The first stage for the stormwater, stormwater pollution prevention erosion control plans is to have a stormwater meeting with the city and inspectors. And then the first thing they do is put erosion control measures, silk fence, dig the ponds, any of those measures that are required and approved. And they'll be in the ground and fully inspected before anything else can occur.
Okay, that's all.
All right. You have questions, comments? Commissioner Giles?
Yeah, so after our last meeting, we've had one of the constituents reach out and was asking if a path could be installed from the, well, it used to be the, I guess, the access when it was Lynn Haven before the, whichever years ago that you were going to do that up there as Lynn Haven. And so I sent a copy of what staff came up with to you, Mr. Porter. And so we were asking, would y'all install that? Yes or no? I mean, it's just, do you want to do it for the community or, or not? That's basically it. We didn't ask for the seventy-five hundred as, and we still could. It doesn't mean you have to give it, but you know, this sidewalk would, would go at, it's contingent upon the HOA in Lynn Haven allowing it. And then it would go to the perimeter going south, if I've got my directions right, southwest. And then it would go west to the perimeter of the, the property and connect to the, to the sidewalk. It would be a ten foot path and it would connect the sidewalk. This would allow connectivity to Bass Lane and due west and the other areas Lynn Haven and those where I know Mr. Parks was talking about all the bicycles and the people running through there today. It would not go through your development. It would go the perimeter of it. If you chose to put a, a gate there that y'all controlled, that would be a separate amenity that I think some of your residents in that subdivision would enjoy being able to go out of their door and hit a ten foot path and that kind of thing. So anyway, I'm just wanting to know, is that something y'all are willing to do?
Commissioner, I think at this point, it is something that we are willing to discuss and, and do. We do have, after we discussed this previously, looking at how that would function and how it could, how it could, we could include it in our plan. We have come up with just some questions we could ask real quick. We would like to do a six foot walk, just because it's in that, it's going to be over in that, in the PUD buffer area that has all the existing trees and foliage that's screening all the houses from this property in development. So just giving that extra four feet to keep our six foot walking path as we have out front on Tate Lane as well. Will allow some of that extra screening to remain in place, not have to replace it with brand new planting and landscaping that will be developed for several years. And then are also, just to, to make a note, due to the, the grade changes between Tate Lane and due west, that connection, there are parts of the trail that would not be ADA compliant. There's some ten to twelve percent slopes that won't be able to be adjusted through that area. So just a note that it would be steeper than five percent or eight point three, if you have handrails for ADA. But a walking trail nonetheless, if you can, can go up that hills.
You would be able to use the wood like we have on the bridge at Woodridge sidewalks and our greenway system down from Charlie Daniels, the Cedar Green. You would be able to use wood on that to take care of that ADA requirement, would you not?
So if you look at it coming from Tate Lane, it actually goes up that large hill and then comes, and then just goes all the way straight back down to the bottom, down toward due west. So it's not necessarily a gully kind of issue that we have as much as that, that long, I think it's like four hundred and fifty something feet worth of a downhill slope.
Okay, if I'm not mistaken, and I may be, and we can get some clarification of this from staff. If it's, if, if that's on public right of way, it's required of ADA for that. The other, it's not. Is that correct? Can somebody help me on this?
I mean.
Anybody from staff?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, bud.
Private infrastructure is not necessarily held to the same standards. And certainly the liability wouldn't be on the city. I'm hesitant to endorse having non-ADA facilities. I'd, I'd like to look into that. Because if, there are different standards for, say, a trail than a walking path. So if it was a mulched trail, that might be different than a standard walking path. But I'd, I'd like to get the opportunity to look at that between now and, say, FMDP. We can word the condition to give a little flexibility that way.
Okay. And I agree with you about the ADA. I think it should be. I think that one of the reasons that we really wanted it ten foot was to match what the rest of them are around. That sidewalk is obviously in front per, per ordinance, obviously. This is a different type situation in that this hopefully, and we don't know this, because that truly wasn't in the, the Greenway master plan that I'm aware of. Is that correct? But there, there are ways to be able to connect that. One of the, one of the things that one of my constituents was talking, and I told, I made the comment, I couldn't believe, kick myself that I didn't think of this myself. But anyway, dealing with the, a Greenway path or a path or, anyway. This allows the people in those areas that I mentioned a while ago to have access to get to that Greenway without ever getting on Mount Juliet Road. And so that, that keeps people off Mount Juliet Road. And a lot of people, I learned, I talked to one, when we came up, when we started inquiring about this, I called someone in Lynn Haven who, I'm not for sure if they're on the board. And again, this is contingent of them, of, by, with them allowing us, allowing y'all to put that there. And he was talking about how that people would walk through there on Bass Lane and then go over and try to come through the cemetery and things like that to get down there. And people had to put no trespassing signs and things like that, which I don't blame them. I would have too. I mean, you know, because there's a, there's a liability exposure there. That's the insurance coming out. But anyway, so it really would help the city to have that connection through there. And I think the ten matches up. While we don't have anything in front of, of Victory Baptist, that doesn't mean that down the road, maybe someone would do that or something. And then we could get that trail all the way down to the town center Greenway there. It would really be an asset and amenity for this city that people would be proud to use. And, and, and I appreciate you considering doing it, because obviously you don't have to. So that's, that's one thing. And I've got another lift of some other things just to ask you about the development.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, sir.
So we were, we were definitely willing to pay to put that in. But I would like you to consider the six foot. And the main reason is, is those trees are absolutely beautiful, the ones that are up right now. And they kind of border our property and the church property. And if we try to go to ten foot off that wall, we really are going to kill the root system of those big trees, which basically all the way around the circumference, if you've been out there, we have big, well-developed trees in the entire perimeter of that property. I mean, there's, it was, someone probably farmed it many years ago. And there's no trees in the center, not one. But there are enormous trees on the outside. So if we bump it up to ten foot, you are going to get into that tree line. So I'd, I'd like you to consider that. The other thing is, is I don't think it's quite safe now. Now, if the church ends up putting something in, it, it'd be different. I don't think they'll let, allow, I don't think the county would allow sidewalks right now, because they don't support sidewalks on county roads, because they don't want to keep up with them. But like right now, I live across, I mean, literally right where it would come out, I live across the street. And we get in a car, put our bikes in a car and drive down to the park. And then we get onto the bike path, because we would never go down Tate Lane on a bike with our kids. It's just, it's not safe. So I would like you to consider that. There would be a danger to people emptying out on the street there and then going down Tate Lane on a bike or, or walking, because people go fifty, sixty miles an hour on the road there. And that's no exaggeration. It's like, it's a, it's, it's a real steep hill right when you would come out of that walking path. But again, we're supportive of putting it in. And would, and would fund that. I would just like you to consider a six foot. And we love the walking trail, because that kind of fits what we were talking about. The park that we're trying to do on the inside, it kind of fits that whole theme. So mulched would be much better, because it kind of fits the, the theme of the neighborhood.
Well, and of course, I can't speak for the church. I've not spoken to anyone from the church about it at all. So I'm, I'm not for sure. I mean, we, we could maybe work on it before the, the final development plan, yeah, or something like that. So we appreciate you willing to do it. We'll, we'll talk again then about the six and the, the, the ten and see what we could do and work with Todd and, and see, see what we could come up with. So thank you for that. I've had some, some inquiries and concerns, and I may have missed it in, in this preliminary master, but I'm not for sure. The, as we talked the other day, y'all changed that where that the, the buffer was actually on the HOA property, correct? And will that be, that, that will be recorded and titled in the HOA, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then a second question that someone has. The actual fence, the actual wall is going to be six foot, correct? And we've got that codified. You're not going to go twelve or fourteen feet or anything like that. It's going to be six. Well, this is a concern if, of.
It will be, it's six feet. And I believe that it actually is a planning zoning, six foot is the tallest that you're allowed to go anyways, regardless of this.
Yeah, it is normally unless you get permission to it, you have to vote it, my understanding. But they still wanted this, so here we've got it on tape and y'all are doing it. And then last but not least, the lighting on the wall. So what kind of light, lighting are y'all proposing on that wall?
It will be very low, very accent lighting. It's, it's more of a, to bring the landscaping up, like you'd see in most, like, if you look across the street, you could see it in my yard. I used to have bright lights coming down from the trees. Now I have like canisters in the ground that kind of shoot up and, and some of them will be those canisters. Some will be on the low part of the wall that will accent maybe the columns that come out so that you can, you know, kind of see the, the warm, but there'll be no high lumens bright light. It'll be a very warm light.
And most of it will be going up and not out. And it'd be low intensity, correct?
Very low.
Okay. And do we have that on the, the, the plan showing that lighting?
I think it's on the, it is on the color rendering. It would be considered, it's, it's not one-ten, it's low voltage. It's low voltage lighting.
Okay.
So there's, it's not a one-ten lighting, it's a low voltage lighting.
Okay.
And another thing, it could be called landscape lighting.
All right.
But it's definitely not high intensity.
Right, and I understand that term. Thank you.
I see number seventeen, it says decorative fixtures and poles are required for outdoor lighting. I think that's all I see on lighting, but it sounds like it's all covered.
The wall, yeah.
You have questions or comments? Commissioner Malley?
Yeah, just clarification about where you were talking about. Can you tell me, show me on here where he's talking about that connection as far as the walkway? She's in right here.
It would come, so this is another problem. There's a driveway there, so it would have to come through that man's driveway, come in here, come down this way, come all the way up here behind the wall. And then, and here on Tate Lane. And there's a, there's a sidewalk up here, so they'd be able to come this far in the sidewalk. But here, there's no sidewalks, that's the church property.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Giles?
And just to clarify for anyone in, in that area that I mentioned, those streets and stuff, this is not for vehicles, this is for bicycles and pedestrian walking. So we, we do not have any kind of, of entrance for vehicles through there. So thank you.
Good point. Anybody else? We all ready to vote? All in favor of the ordinance? Please signify by saying aye. Any, any nays, any abstentions? It does carry on second reading.
Thank you, everybody.
The next item on the agenda is nine C, an ordinance to adopt the the property tax freeze program for the elderly, low income homeowners of the city of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, as authorized by state law. Have a motion in a second. Commissioner Hefner, I think you have an amendment?
I have an amendment. Would like to amend that we adopt the red line version, which is there are some house cleaning items and some clarifications on the tax year that this will, will start and the, and the income.
All right. And I believe everyone has at the table has a copy of this. There's a motion, all second. I didn't hear a second, so all second. Any questions or comments on the red line addition? We ready to vote? All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Or back on the ordinances once amended, the red line addition? Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the ordinance is once amended, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Nine C does carry on second reading. The next item is ten D, an ordinance to amend the land use plan for the property located at sixty-two thirty-five Central Pike, map seventy-six parcel fifty-three from mixed use to multifamily residential. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Air motion in a second. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say, I'll start on it, we're on the land use, but I'll just briefly reference the, the annexation and the PUD. It's a beautiful development in itself, but my only problem with it is the land use itself does call for mixed use. does call for mixed use. And I've, I know there's challenges with doing the mixed use on it. It'd just be my preference that it stay at mixed use. Any other questions or comments? Vice Mayor?
Yes, right. We can get some representation up here just to be able to clarify that, just to see if there's any.
That I, clarify, what do you want?
Oh.
What are you thinking clarification on?
Well, for the, for the mixed use, I don't know if they, this is only just for the, the zoning, never mind.
This is for the land use?
Yes, I'm sorry. We'll wait for the next one. Sorry. Apologize.
No, no worries. I was like, no, I'm sure I, I'm sure I wondered where it was.
I just got ahead a little bit. Sorry about that.
Quite all right. Commissioner Mulley?
What was your recommendation?
I'd recommend leaving the land use as is.
Meaning?
Not amending it for mixed use. Yeah, mixed use does add, it's currently from mixed use to multifamily residential. So.
So you're wanting the commercial there?
Correct. There is an inter, there is an interchange coming in someday. And I think it would well served to have the commercial there. Commissioner Mulley?
Sorry. This would require a change of plans?
Yeah.
Yeah. Have representation.
Hello, my name is Greg Gable. I'm a land planner, landscape architect, 716 Hampton Cove, Franklin, Tennessee. And I'm representing the applicant.
So based on the mayor's request, can you respond?
Yes, we believe that our master plan that we're proposing tonight is the appropriate and right master plan for this property. There are many steep slopes in the property. There are two streams that need to be put into conservation easement because they are protected by the state of Tennessee. There would be a very, very small area for commercial. This is the topography here. Everything is flowing from Central Pike down the hill to the protected stream corridor here. The yellow slopes that you're seeing are between 10% and greater. The red slopes that you're seeing here are between 20% and greater. So while we can design a master plan that's residential, that meets the, the city requirements from an engineering perspective, we're able to design with the land. We're able to design with the contours. Commercial development, the maximum slope for a parking lot is 5%. You can't have a parking lot greater than 5%. So for commercial, you'd be talking about a lot of retaining walls. You'd be talking about a lot of buildings that would be sitting down below Central Pike. We believe that not only is the use that we're proposing for this, the best use, but also the timing for this is the best use. We asked for your consideration to defer this vote a month. And what that has given us is time to evaluate the traffic signal at Pleasant Grove Road in Central Pike. Patterson Homes is committing tonight to you that within 60 days of receiving a grading permit, the traffic signal will be installed. So in addition to bringing Central Pike up to city standards from Pleasant Grove Road West and in, in installing a 12-foot pedestrian path along Central Pike that will tie into the state's future improvements, we're going to go ahead and install the traffic signal. Now, we know that it'll be up to TDOT and Mount Juliet as to when that traffic signal becomes active, but we want to go ahead and get it in now. And that will allow for ease of construction when the state does come in and when they do their portion of work from Pleasant Grove going to the, to the east. So this is an improvement. It makes sense to stop in O Falls first. We know the residential can go there today. The master plan does make sense. And we can work with the land in a more sensitive way than the commercial uses could.
So you, you don't want to go there, right? I assume you don't want to go there with the commercial.
We don't have any commercial uses proposed as a part of our plan today, no.
I, I think it's safe to assume that they want the land use amendment to make the rest of the project work.
Yes.
Is that fair statement?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. Well, that was my only question.
Thank you.
As far as the land use.
Commissioner Hefner?
Sorry. So just to clarify, you're, you're saying the land isn't conducive to commercial because of the 5% requirement on the parking?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So it doesn't appear that anything is going to, commercial is going to go there based on that statement?
It would be very difficult without significant retaining walls. That's correct. The residential uses and the way that we're able to work them through the streets and the alleyways, having townhomes that front onto Central Pike with the alley behind them, it allows us to transition the grades down the slopes of the land.
And one last comment. Thank you for that. Stoplight at Central Pike, that's in my district, and I, I hear about, I get pictures of wrecks there constantly.
And we wanted to take a month. We wanted to be able to come to you tonight and say, we can have that installed within 60 days of getting a grading permit. We, we know that we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Did you, you didn't actually make a motion, did you?
No.
Okay, all right.
No, I don't have an, I don't have an emotion or amendment to land use. Any other questions or comments on 10D? All in favor of 10D, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? I'm, I'm going to be a nays, but that does pass by a vote of three to two on second reading. If there's no objection, since the land use has been amended now, I would propose reading 10A, B, C, and E at the same time. Right. Hearing no objections, I will read those four. 10A, which is a resolution adopting a plan of services for the property known as 6235 Central Pike property located at 6235 Central Pike, map 97, 76 parcels, 1353 in Wilson County, Tennessee, located within the city's urban growth boundary. 10B, which is an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately 15.08 acres of property located at 6235 Central Pike, map 76 parcel 53, and located within the city's urban growth boundary. 10C, which is a resolution and memorandum of an ordinance relative to the annexation of the property located at 6235 Central Pike. And then there's 10E, which is an ordinance to reason on approximately 34.14 acres of property at 6235 Central Pike, map 76 parcel 53, and map 97 parcel 13 from Wilson County R1, and Will, Mount Juliet RS40 to RM16 PUD and RS30 PUD, and to adopt the preliminary master development plan. Is there a motion for these four items? Have a motion, and I saw a second as well. Questions or comments on these four? Commissioner Mulley, you're recognized.
I'm going to ask the same question on the detention ponds that I asked earlier because there was some drainage issue. It was brought up earlier in the citizen comments that having a problem with the church. So he had mentioned your development. So do you do the detention ponds first to contain the water, to keep it from running off the property?
We do. Joe Haddix, CSDG, yes. Typically in construction in a site of this size, you're going to install a sediment basin, which eventually turns into the detention pond. I think the majority of this site actually drains to the west. So we're actually going towards John Wright Road as, as opposed to north, like to the church property, so.
Okay. Okay, that's all I wanted.
Any questions or comments? All right. Are we ready to vote on it? I'll just say now if the land use supports it. That was my, one objection was the land use. I didn't think it should be amended, but it has been amended. So I'll say it's a very nice project for what they proposed and built. So we ready to vote? All right. All in favor of the four items? Oh, staff's got hands going all over the place. Yes, sir. Which one of you is?
Real quick, I'd like to amend Public Works Condition 2A to state that a traffic signal will be installed within 60 days of the grading permit. Currently, we have that as a signal warrant analysis, but they've committed to, to just getting it installed.
That was 10A under Public Works?
Correct. Sorry, that was 2A.
2A. And what was your proposal change?
A signal shall be installed within 60 days of receiving the building permit, grading permit.
60 days within the grading permit?
And then the signal shall include turn lanes on Central Pike and an advanced warning beacon stating, be prepared to stop when flashing.
So you just cha, really, you're just changing the part with the COs?
Changing the COs.
So you're marking it, we're marking out the COs and saying with, within 60 days of grading?
Correct.
Okay. So on 10A, I'll, I'll make that motion. The signal warrant analysis shall be submitted within 60 days?
Not a, not a signal warrant analysis. They are committing, they're just getting it installed. That is allowed within the MUTCD with streets of, of this, of this classification.
So we need to cross out should the signal be warranted? And just where it says it shall be constructed, would you say within 60 days it shall be constructed?
Correct.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. You good with that? All right. Mr. Haddix?
Sorry, we misspoke earlier. Six months. I think as staff and Mr. Director White could attest, it's going to take us that long just to get the signal polls, once we get city's approval on the shop drawings? So.
60 days, six months?
Yeah. I, I'm sorry, sorry for that. But it's still, you know, by the time you see silt fence completely installed, they're going to have signal polls ordered and being shipped, so.
I'm amenable to the change you seconded. Any, okay. I'm good with six, staff good with six months. Shane?
Can we, I would recommend making that 180 days. You planning with that?
Sure.
Okay.
And.
You good with 180 days? Seems very close to six months. Just not quite.
If you guys, my, another recommendation I would have, if developers along, works along with you guys on this, that if the signal is not installed within 180 days, new building permits will be withheld until the signal is complete.
If the signal is not installed within 100 days, then we're holding building permits essentially?
180 days, we recommend that building permits be withheld until the signal is complete.
Are you okay with that change? Mr. Haddix?
Yes, sir. Sounds good.
Okay. All right. So on 2A, we are striking where it says signal warrant analysis shall be submitted at the 60th and 120th CO. We're also striking should the signal warrant, should the signal be warranted, it shall strike that and says within 180 days, beacon, the signal, I guess 180 days, the signal should be constructed to allow the widening of Central Pike in the region. The signal shall include turn lanes on Central Pike and an advanced warning beacon stating in all caps, be prepared to stop when flashing. And if not installed within 100 days, building permits will be held.
180 days, sir.
Yes. Did I say 100?
Yes, sir.
I have 180 days written down here, so. Any questions or comments on this? Yes, Shane?
I just want to make sure. I did not know if y'all had put a per lot contribution on this job, but our standard erosion control statement.
I believe it's number 25 on here. And let's, we can do this one. We'll come, we'll come back on that if you want to discuss it. All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're back on this as once amended. You've had questions about number 25 as well for the voluntary contributions?
Just double checking.
I'm sorry?
I was just double checking.
But it says a voluntary contribution of $7,500 per lot shall be paid at the time of erosion current permit is issued. These funds, you know what, I had a lot, a lot of this. These funds shall be allotted to first go towards the signal. The cost of the signal shall be established at the time of letter of credit being placed during construction. Any remaining portion of the $7,500, $7,500 per lot contribution after, after covering the traffic signal expense shall be directed towards the 25 million to be paid to the city of Mount Juliet, to be paid by the city of Mount Juliet to TDOT for the Central Pike interchange. My only, my only concern with that last phrase on there, to be paid by the city of Mount, today, there is a possibility that if TDOT doesn't do it in the allocated timeframe, that we don't owe TDOT any more money. I assume and then it would go to the 5 million that we've got in escrow to offset that? Okay, good. And that was a thumbs up. Any other questions or comments? I'll say this, just under the conditions on the PUD, under planning, we've got items 16 through 22. These are from the Planning Commission. I'll read these. The Planning Commission supports the waiver for the omission of the clubhouse requirement in 5104. 17, the Planning Commission supports the waiver for 20 feet building separation since the buildings will be sprinkled. 18 reads the Planning Commission supports the waiver request for the omission of masonry garage door separa, separation columns required by 5104-4. And then number 19, the Planning Commission supports the waiver request to provide six five-space bike racks for multifamily components in lieu of the one five-space bike for each building. 20, which is the Planning Commission supports the waiver to request to omit the fence required around the multifamily portion of the development by Article 5104-1. And under 21, the Planning Commission supports the waiver to omit the C buffer requirements between the RS30 and the RM16 zoning due to the existing conditions. And then 22, the Planning Commission supports the waiver request to allow 50% masonry and 50% secondary ma, secondary materials. So I will make the motion that we, as the board, adopt these two, four, six, seven items that were recommended from the Planning Commission. We have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? So we've adopted those. And then under Public Works, number one, it says the following variances are requested or required. A, to allow private roads. It says supported with the proposed cross-section. B, to allow access streets to be stubbed at the property line for 104, 405. And then C, to allow up to six acres of disturbance slopes exceeding 20% conditional and cut condition only. So I will also move that we adopt those as well for the Public Works comments. All right. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, we're back on the, on the four items. Before us, the four ordinance one is as three times amended. Any other questions or comments before we vote? All in favor of the four items, please signify by saying aye. Any, any objections? Those four items do carry on second reading. Thank you. If there's no objections, I'd like to propose a 10-minute recess. Hearing none, then we will recess until 8:15. Hearing none, then we will recess until eight fifteen.
See.
I call the meeting back to order. We have, we're on item number 12A, an ordinance to amend the land use plan for the property known as Courtyards at McFarland located at 5025 Old Lebanon Dirt Road, map 77 parcel one, from mixed use to multifamily residential and parks and greenways. Have a motion, and a second. Item is on the floor. You know what anybody like the floor? Commissioner Heffner, you recognized.
Thank you. So this, I'm going to talk about this land use and the reason for its request is the developer is tied to a development, proposed development, and the applicant is going to be giving to the city roughly five acres, maybe a little over five acres, sorry, seven acres. They've also proposing that they will build a pickleball court at their cost if we choose to have a pickleball court there. So we're talking a significant amount of money, i.e. savings, which we're going to be talking about the budget here. We can all use savings. So it'd be another park, or potentially it could be some land that they would donate to the city that we could, that we can in turn sell. Right now, I think its approximate value is 1.5, and with the land use change, it would become commercial, or it could be zoned commercial, in which case the property would develop, would double. So you're looking at potentially a gift to the city of nearly $3 million. So that's what's behind the land use, and of course, I fully support it. That's all I had.
All right. Do we have representation? The portion, can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. J. E. Schur, Reagan Smith, 315 Woodland Street, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. Looking at the land use amendment, exhibit B, the map there, it shows the portion you're asking for a land use change to mix, from mixed use to multifamily, and then the portion in green is from mixed use to parks and greenway. The portion in green looks to have roughly 400 feet of road frontage?
I think that's about right, yes, sir. I don't have to exhibit in front of them.
I, I think it'd be worth a lot more to us if we had, you got that little jut out there that goes in front of it that impedes on the road frontage. My understanding, that's a detention pond for the whole site?
Yes, sir. That's the detention pond for the whole site. We, the detention pond being built, that would be built with the residential neighborhood, would serve the park land as well. And it's been sized to accommodate the development of the park or commercial if it's developed. Originally, we had a commercial development on the site, and we sized the pond for that.
So how would this work, assuming you donate the land to us and we choose as a city to develop this for commercial?
Yes.
And then that commercial entity starts using your detention pond with your developments being on their land and responsible for it? How would that work?
Well, as it's structured now, the HOA for the residential development would be maintaining the commercial pond, I mean, would be maintaining the detention pond.
Okay.
Originally, the detention pond was split between the two parcels.
And I'm guessing the reason for the offer to the city is, is the area is not deemed
Not quite.
mature enough?
Not quite mature enough, and not enough trip generation to support commercial. We actively sought commercial developers.
I mean, for me, this is very similar to the one we just did, where it was a multi-use, and it just wasn't to the point yet to justify all the change that it would take to bring it up to commercial. Now, had the interchange come in later on down the line, might be a different story. This is not getting an interchange anytime soon, so I don't know what the outlook long-term for commercial is on that, with the idea of selling it. Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
So what is the call, okay, so, so right now, you're saying the lands, Commissioner Heffner, you're saying it's about 1.3 million is what?
It, roughly, the land right now, as it's, as it sits, is worth about $6 a square foot. And when we run the math, that's about a million and a half dollars.
Okay.
If it's rezoned to commercial and viable commercial, then the price, marketable price would be double that, which would be 12, which would be $12 a square foot, is what the developer has told me.
So, so what is, what is just a ballpark cost of what you guys are budgeting right now? If this was to go and be developed into a park, what is the cost of that?
Little over a million dollars to build the pickleball court, the restroom facilities, the parking lot, and the walking trails.
Okay. So, and then, of course, it'd be putting back another burden back to this, you know, the taxpayers to be able to fund another park. I love parks, by the way, I do, but at the same time, you know, this is kind of like off the beaten path, so it's only going to be really for this development until the other developments kick in several years from down. So I'm, I'm just kind of curious.
There is, there's a development across the street that is actively under construction.
Yeah, and they, I believe they're what, three or four years out? Maybe? Yeah, anyway, yeah, I think they're pretty far out. Yeah, 600 homes. I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm just wondering, but if, but if this is going to be donated back to the city, do we really want to develop? I mean, is there any way, and I guess maybe this go back to the attorney, is to be able to see if that can be like a voluntary contribution, instead of then developing it to put it back into, you know, again, instead of them investing back into that land, put that back in for the, if the city decides to, to either develop it, or if they don't decide to develop it, it can at least sit there in some type of reserves, right? This way, because if the city turns around and sells it, just like you mentioned, in a couple years, right, then that way, it wouldn't be a park, it'd be just a piece of land. We wouldn't be wasting that money from this developer, and then if the city decides to go ahead and reallocate those funds into somewhere else, into other parks, then that would be an option as well. Again, I'm just trying to think outside the box here, because I know this is a big issue. Yes, you know, there is 600 homes that's coming, but they also have a lot of amenities too in their area.
What you're, what you're asking, are you saying donate the land and then donate the build cost to the city?
Instead of, instead of them spending the money and building it at the time, whatever they, you know, were going to invest in that land on, putting that infrastructure there, reallocating into a general, you know, as in a reserve? I don't, I'm, well, first, I'm going to go back to the attorney. Has that been done? And what are the thoughts there?
I don't know if the board has done it in the past, not since I've been here, but it really wouldn't fall under the voluntary contribution realm that you all have been working under.
So how would that work?
Because it wouldn't be $7,500 per lot.
I know. And how would that work, then?
So it would have to be a donation that they provided to the city. I don't know exactly what that would look like, but it wouldn't be the voluntary contributions.
I think if we get over this hurdle of the land use plan amendment, and then we can talk in more detail about the plan, that everything's up for discussion.
Yeah, but the problem is, is that if we change the land use, then that automatically...
This is only first reading.
Well, I would suggest we make the land use conditional on, on approval of the PUD long-term.
If I can make a recommendation as part of the motion, I would recommend that this item not come back until second reading, so it aligns with all the other ones.
With the PUD?
Yes.
Okay.
It makes complete sense to us.
Commissioner Malley?
Yeah, I'm in full support. I do like the park idea, the pickleball court. The, as far as who's going to mow it, that, you know, so, I mean, I understand that, but it would be a great trade-off. I mean, I wouldn't think that would be a problem. So I'm in full support of this. Personally, I wouldn't want to sell it for commercial. There's commercial going in across the street, so I, this is not my vision for it. I love the setting of it, where the, the park, it's, it's a place for families to go and, you know, whatever. So, I was going to say something, now I forgot, but yeah, I fully support this.
I'm, I'm going to go back, maybe this, maybe you just need to tell me this is going to be something that worked out in the PUD, but with that detention pond existing on somebody else's property for land that could be potentially commercial for us, there'd be some type of agreement or something on this, that this other HOA pays for the detention time for our commercial property? That just...
I think there could be an agreement. We could adjust the property line. We've moved the property line at staff's recommendation for cost of the park, and taking on the cost so the city would not have to maintain the detention pond.
Okay, it's unconventional. Commissioner Giles?
Jay, did you not tell me in a meeting that y'all wanted to waive that $7,500 a, a house?
Yes, sir. In the meeting.
I thought you did.
In, in the meeting, we discussed the fact that with a $1.5 million piece of land, and then a million dollar worth of improvements, that we would be seeking credit towards our $7,500 per lot.
So if you can't find anybody to go there now, why do we think we can find somebody to buy this commercial, even in two years?
Commissioner Heffner?
So, it's another option. We don't have to. We can, we can ask them to build the pickleball court. So I just offer that up as an option to give, that gives us the option of having them build a pickleball court, or we decide as a board, maybe we don't want a pickleball court and we want to sell it. So I'm just providing another option, and I asked, it was actually my request. I'm, I'd support either, either or, but I want this body to make the final decision. If we want to take that off the table and just tell them, build the pickleball courts, then I'm fine with that, too.
Vice Mayor, do you have any more?
Yeah, I was just going to say. If you could, just let him respond back. Sorry.
Commissioner Giles?
If, of course, I think it should be commercial, like, and bring the tax revenues in, if we could get something that pays tax, anything that some of the offices do not. But if we could, we need that money in the city, obviously. I would say, which I'm not for this, but I would say that if you're going to build a pickleball court, why don't you build a tennis court that you can convert to if someone wants to play pickleball or tennis?
Understood, and if we can get to the PUD, we, and make changes, we can do that.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, real quick. I like the project because it's 55 and older. It is restricted. It's not a burden back on our schools. I like that, okay? Now that this detention pond here, that's concerning to me, because we have now, from now until the next meeting, to be able to have staff figure this out. We don't need any more additional burden for a project to be put back on our taxpayers or our staff. So I'm going to support this tonight to, you know, but I'm expecting somehow, some way to figure this out before next reading, because, you know, that's a concern of mine. And also where we get into the other side of it, which is, obviously, I'm not going to ask the board to come off with a decision tonight, but I would like to talk to each one of you about, you know, you know, like, what the vision is, because that is a concern, whether if we, well, I'm saying like a workshop, as in to be able to figure out a workshop. If we can be able to figure this out, because you're talking another burden, if, if we do turn it into a pickleball or tennis court, whatever that is, okay? But we already know what the cost is on Tate Lane, just ballpark, right? There was some discussion there in previous meetings. It's well over $100,000. So, and I'm just trying to think what, you know, like, you know, what is this going to cost the citizens? One more part, which, listen, I love parks, but at the same time, if it goes back to what you had just mentioned, to be resold, then there's that other side of it, which is, again, and, and I appreciate the other option, I do, but I'm just trying to figure this out, as in, what is the vision here for this area? Because it's not generating any revenue. It sounds like it's going to be a burden back on to our staff and the citizens. So, again, I'm just trying to figure this out, as in, just tonight.
Commissioner Heffner?
I, I think we have some time to figure it out. I don't think we have to have all the answers right now. We're still on the land use, which is going to be, I guess, is going to be contingent on approving the PUD, but, again, it was only an option. If we want to keep it, sell it, have them build a park, doesn't even have to be a pickleball, it can be what we decide ultimately, what makes sense, we can do that in the PUD. But we got to get to the PUD. So, but...
I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that this be, second reading, if this passes on first, second reading not be heard until the PUD passes on first reading and comes back with second reading on it. Is your second?
Yeah, second.
All right. Any comments, questions? All in favor of this, if it passes on first reading, the second reading to be held with the second reading of the PUD, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All back on this as once amended. Commissioner Malley?
It's the land use. So the plan has not been heard at planning commission. So this is just approval of the land use. So if it gets approved tonight, it will go to the planning commission to have the plan heard, and then start the process. That, that's how it works, so.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. It does, it does pass, so I think you will be going to the planning commission for your PUD and the others, so.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 11A, an ordinance of the city of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget, property tax rate, and sewer rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. Motion is second. I'm just going to take attempt here to try to streamline some things as, as quickly as we can, just operating from our finance director's notes, and she sent over some recommendations that have been worked through with staff. Page one and two of that document calls for $3.1 million in cuts total. There's 185, 185,000 plus in new spending, but she's calling for 3.1 million total in cuts on that. I'm going to make the emotion that we adopt all the cuts on pages one and two, and then on page four, adopt the tax rate of 30 cents. I'll make that second. Okay, so the, I can read these if there's desire to read the cuts. Like to hear me read those? I can, I'll do a quick summary, which is economic development, cut, cut a million dollars from that. We'll still obligate some million dollars next year. The fire department has $220,000 worth of cuts, identified EMS, another 100,000. Parks, depending on money part, 500, 500, 8,000. Satellite parks, 10,000, 10,000. ITs identified, 35,000. Public Works, 300,000. Transfers from other funds, north of a million, 50,000. And then Personnel Administration, down 46,000. The police department have got several line items, 28,000, 5,000, 600,000, 2,000, 65,000, 30,000, 30,250, 5,000, 20,000, 6,250, 7,500, and 118,000 identified on those. And then Animal Control, another 8,300, to bring us to that total of 3.1 million. Commissioner Heffner?
Personnel, I understand that is, as part of these cuts we're referring to here, is our deputy parks director included in those cuts?
No.
Let me get your mic on.
That position is not included in, in these adjustments, so it would need to be added back in.
So it need to be added back in?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to motion to add Deputy Parks Director position back into the budget, back into the cuts, I guess. Is that how I would say it? Take them, want them back in? Adjustment, yes, correct. Putting the Deputy Parks Director position back in the budget.
I'm going to, I'm going to say that that motion is not well-received due to the fact we currently have money budgeted for a Deputy Parks Director, and we have a, one of the, the person who was in that Deputy Parks Director role is now the interim director in that. So having talked with Ms. Hare, we have, we have the money in the budget right now to ensure that there's no cuts to any personnel in the Parks Department.
Okay, that's not what I heard, but that's...
So essentially, what, what he's saying is there's money for a Parks Director.
Because there's two.
There's money for, there's money for a Parks Director already in the budget. There's money for a Deputy Parks Director that's already in the budget.
Got it.
We have an interim Parks Director, so we still have a Deputy Parks Director position. So there wouldn't be any cuts to personnel in that case.
Until the interim?
Until the, he's either promoted to.
Promoted to Parks Director.
Yes.
And my recommendation there would have, whoever winds up, or however we wind up with a director on that, and I don't know a better way to say that, we've had more options presented tonight, that they work with the city manager, either make a recommendation, we keep things the way they are, or they may want to do some organizational changes themselves to the department.
Okay.
But I, I did just want to be clear that the way our budget is right now, there's no loss of personnel.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. One more thing, since we're voting on the rate, I do want to put forward to this board to consider, I mentioned this at the workshop, I also mentioned on first reading, the city sits on quite a bit of real estate, and I have instructed Candy Martin to start marketing that property. Of course, anything finalized would have to be approved by the, by the board. But I would like to codify some dollar amount for this year that we will commit to selling at least $2 million worth of city-owned real estate, and put that in the budget as, as showing it as, how would you show that as future?
You would just add it as a, as a budget revenue item, so you would put 2 million to the sale of property.
Okay, and if it doesn't, if we don't sell it, close on it within the next fiscal year, right, we'd have to come back and do a budget amendment to remove that?
No, you wouldn't have to.
Okay.
But we would, just wouldn't collect it. So the, it would just go against the revenues.
Would it be like a receivable?
No. No, it would just be, it would just be, if you're planning to sell property, you would put, you know, you expect to sell it for 2 million. It, it, it's going to inflate your revenues by 2 million, so hopefully the intent is to actually sell it so that you get the 2 million.
That's why we're doing it.
Yeah.
It's not, we're not inflating. It's, we're saying we're going to sell.
Yeah, it's just an estimate of what you would sell property for, and if the intent is to sell the property, then you can put it in there.
Okay, that would be the intent, to sell it, because it's not benefiting the citizens sitting on it, especially if it's raw land. And what would kind of effect would that have on the tax rate?
Well, that would increase your fund balance by 2 million. So you could potentially cut the tax rate by 10 cents, or you could increase your ending fund balance to 7 million and keep the tax rate at 30 cents, and then I'm closer to my 10% of expenditures.
So we could drop it to 20 cents?
You could, yes.
Okay, by, by committing to sell 2 million dollars worth of city-owned real estate property that's not benefiting anybody?
Yes, just remember, that's not recurring revenues, so it would offset a capital item, but yeah.
No, I get, yeah, I get that, but it's making it more of a smoother.
Transition.
Transition, right. So, but that, putting that out there for conversations and discussions, obviously, it has to be voted on and approved, but that's my recommendation. I've been telling Kenny, need to sell, start selling these holdings that we're not doing anything with. So this is one way to codify it and make sure that it's actually done.
Well, if we, if we put 2 million in the budget as revenues for the land, and for, we go to sell the land and, I don't know, if we get a low-ball offer or something on it, and we've already collected the property tax for the year, do we fall below, or do we just, is, I don't want to see a situation where we have to take an offer just to balance the budget.
You would fall below the fund balance level if you did not collect the.
The 2 million?
The 2 million. And kept the rate at, or and reduced the rate to 20 cents, you would fall below your fund balance level.
So what was your suggestion? What was your preference? Just to go towards the fund balance?
I, yes, if you're going to, I still wouldn't change the rate at 30 cents if I would keep it, because then that, it just puts us in a better position at the end of the year.
I mean, we've got this property sitting around us, it's, we've got offers on it for four and a half, 5 million dollars. We've got, I'm hearing of contract negotiations on other property that, that we own out on Golden Bear. We've got, you know, Kenny's talking to somebody over in York Road, so we've, we probably have 7, 8 million dollars worth of property that he's in active conversations with. I thought 2, 2 million dollars was conservative, but, but you're right, I mean, it could fall through. We got a year to do it, so, and we got more property that we're not even considering at this, that these are just active conversations going on right now. So, and our revenues could come in to offset the 2 million if we don't sell it.
They could.
Correct?
I hope so.
Go Costco.
And BJ's. Commissioner Malley?
All right, so there's an amendment on the table to accept the decreases that came in the email from Dana, and make the rate 30 cents. That's your amendment?
Correct.
All right, so what about the two increases?
I was going to read those after we voted on this separately.
All right, so, yeah, my question was, what if that property doesn't sell? I don't think we should be playing with that, it's an idea, but, yeah, I mean, what if it doesn't sell? So I think that's a problem, in my opinion. Could I talk you into removing the tax rate and just voting on the cuts, and then we hold the rate for a separate vote individually?
No.
Because 30 cents is a huge mistake. It is not high enough. It, with these cuts, it leaves the on-hand balance of 5.5. What are you going to do next year? What's the plan for next year when we have a balance of 5.5 billion? What is the plan? What is the plan, anybody?
I'll, I'll say I, you know, Commissioner Hefner's point. I mean, I've, I've seen a contract for 1.8 million dollars of land. Now, it, it's not just sell it, it comes with some other strings attached to it. It's like an improvement, a development, some other things, it's not quite that thing, that simple, but I think we will find ways to adjust that fund balance through. Mr. Hefner's suggestions are on this. I mean, we can do it without obligating us to move on it too if it doesn't work. Commissioner Hefner?
Yeah, one more, yeah, one more point. I made it earlier in my comments that we don't have any contributions, we, we heard tonight about voluntary contributions from the developers. Nowhere in this budget are you gonna see voluntary contributions. And there's a good reason for it, we don't know when they're gonna come, they're tied, it's hard to track, they're tied to COs, tied to building permits. But I understand, we've got over, how many households that are under, under works right now that are broken ground? I don't know, a couple thousand public works, maybe you can help me with that. So we know there's gonna be some voluntary contributions that are becoming in, we just don't know how much. So again, additional upside to revenue when we go back next year and look and see, okay, wow, we didn't account for these because we really didn't know they were coming in, when they were coming in, but they came in. So I think we'll be okay if we don't sell 2 million dollars worth of property, I guess is what I'm saying. But if we want to split it and call it a million, reduce it by 5 cents.
Just as, as a reminder too, those, those voluntary contributions are tied to very specific projects, so.
Correct.
It just depends on, it, they're not gonna, they're restricted revenue, so they're not gonna help you with general expenses, it's just.
Well, capital projects, at capital projects, this is why we're, where we're taken off of unmarked, you know, out of, out of unmarked reserves.
Right.
So the capital projects will be covered by those, like, we've got expense items in here that we're showing as an expense, but I know for a fact that developers is contributing voluntary money, contribution money that's gonna pay for it or offset it a great deal. But we're showing it as an expense in this budget.
If we, we do try to capture that as well, because we have a project that has a $525,000 price tag on it that is gonna be covered by a developer donation, and that is reflected in the budget.
Where?
In the revenue on the capital projects fund.
So you're showing, so you're showing voluntary contributions?
I'm, I'm showing a developer donation that's specifically related to.
Not a contribution.
Right, that's specifically designated for a project.
Well, maybe we should start calling it donations, because we're not capturing the voluntary contributions until we receive them, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So even though we've got millions of dollars that have been committed to the city from developers, we're not showing that in the budget. And I agree, we, we can't show it as a revenue, because we haven't recognized it as revenue yet. But it will eventually offset these costs that the city is having a front end and pay for, which is, so.
Well, I, I would, I would say we can, wherever the property tax ends up with, as long as we get our, our fund balance in those lands that, that we have a number of them on those things, that could really change our fund balance for this budget for next year, especially coming back. Commissioner Mulally?
All right, um, we have been using the fund balance to make up shortfalls in revenue for several years. This year, we'll be using 21 million from our fund balance, even with the tax increase leaving 5 million dollars. What is the plan for next year? Is the 21 million covering recurring? Is the 21 million covering recurring expenses? If so, how are we gonna pay for those next year when we don't have enough in our fund balance to cover the expenses? Anyone?
Uh, that's, that's a good question. We have, our revenues right now are, in this budget are about 600,000 more than our recurring costs. So that leaves capital, everything, any, any kind of capital that we purchase is coming out of reserves, except for 600,000.
So what's the plan?
Look at the budget next year? With the rate?
Seriously, what's the plan?
We, you know, we have a budget, we have a budget every year, we can, we can adjust if needed to be. Um, let's, uh, let me get the vice mayor here, he's been waiting patiently.
So, so again, you and I have spent hours on the phone, just so everybody understands that. Next year, we won't be having to flip out the bill for the, you know, for the fire truck that's paid for, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's 2.1 million dollars that we don't have to worry about, correct?
2.4.
2.4, okay, thank you for rounding up for me, thank you, that's even more money. The other side of it is the fact that we're also, is it next year or the following year that we're gonna be out of one of our bonds? And, and, and how much is that, just ballpark?
It'll be next year, but those are structured so that the debt service stays even.
Okay.
So I've lessened the, the, the bond that we just did, I lessen the payment for the first couple of years to make sure I can keep that even. So that one bond will drop off, but the, the payments will stay the same.
Okay, and I don't want to steal anybody's thunder up here, but I heard somebody talk about there's a, there's a retail store that's gonna be opening up here soon. I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but, but have we calculated those numbers yet, just ballpark?
No, and I will say for sales tax, I look at trends and, and increases. It's great that we have one opening up, we've also lost a couple from bankruptcy.
Exactly, yep.
So those numbers, I go by the, the trends and the overall percentage increase in history, unless I know for certain I've got a, you know, home run coming into the city.
Yeah, well, well, I mean, like, you know, like at the same time, just with Costco, I mean, if you're not, if you're shopping at Costco, that means you're probably not shopping at Walmart, so it cancels each other out. So unless there's, you know, residents that don't live here and they're shopping, just bypassing through, that's another form of revenue. But anyways, to get back to my other thing, which is, I like my last question here. Is there anything else that we're missing that is on this year's budget that is not gonna be on next year's budget? Cause I know we had discussed it, and I don't have my book, it's out in my truck right now, so. But I know there was one more action item, which was, I think, a million, 2 million, 3, but I, I could be wrong.
Uh, I talked about the Costco payment, that one.
Thank you, yes, which was split, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's 2 million, but we can split that between the two years.
Okay. And that was part of the motion, so. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, and how much is PD right now?
I'm sorry?
Uh, PD for the cost?
Oh, oh, the headquarters, I'm sorry, I think there's 7 million left in there for this year, that won't be, but that's at a capital project, and a bond borrowing, so.
Okay. But still, though, I mean, if we're taking out of one, we can be able to, again, if there's opportunities there. I know, I don't want to misspeak for anybody, but again, I'm just thinking about, just to be able to help answer your question, there is gonna be some changes that, that we're paying our debt this year, and next year we won't be paying for it. So again, I mean, and not only that, there's also some equipment that is being purchased this year through our first responders that should not have to be purchased for next year, so. There is some opportunity there, just throwing it out there.
That's, I think, Pusher Hefner was, if you were finished, Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
Next.
I don't know if this needs to be codified, but we did this last year, but I'd like to see codified in this budget somehow that we do a, a mid-year review, financial review, that we look at actual spend and actual, you know, go looking back six months, actual revenue that's been realized and actual expenses that have been paid out.
Can we set that for January, that way we'll have through December?
Yeah, January, so do I need a motion?
Well, we're on a motion.
Okay.
But, but we can, I think we can just handle that without unanimous consent. To do a regroup?
A regroup in six months, we can look at actual six months of realized revenue and realized expenses, and we could see maybe that some of this property has been sold, closed on.
Right, Commissioner Mulally?
That's a motion?
No, we can just catch it, we'll vote on this, and we can just do it on consent, if you, that's agreeable.
All right, so based on what Vice Mayor said, in fiscal year '24, we transferred 11 and 1/2 million to other funds from the general fund. That increased in fiscal year '25 to 14.3 million, it is now 20.3 million in this budget for 20, fiscal year '26. Right?
I think you're referring to the transfers to the capital projects, and this year they're 14 million after the adjustment. The total, there's other transfers that, there's transfers that go out to debt, to debt service fund and then transferred to State Street Aid.
All right, so my question is about the 20.3 million in this budget for fiscal year '26. So is that 20.3 recurring in the future, or is that just a one-time for this budget?
So the capital projects part would be one time if they finish the project, otherwise it would, it would carry over. The 3.6 and the 700,000, those, those are recurring.
Okay, so if it's recurring, how do we, how do we, how do you plan to pay for that with only 5 million dollars in the fund balance?
Well, that's covered in the recurring revenue, the revenues cover personnel operating and those two transfers. That is covered by the revenues. It's the capital items that are the, the.
All right, I support the cuts, but I'm not gonna vote for this because it's tied in with the rate. I think 30 cents is ridiculously low, I think it's a mistake, and I think it's a bad budget.
Ms. Hare?
In, uh, accepting the, the changes outside of the increases, I'd also like to clarify, is the reduction in the sewer rates, the 3%?
I just, I just, just trying to split them up.
Okay.
And then, uh, make them in chunks to go through. I'll in favor of the amendment to adopt the reductions and set the rate at 30 cents, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That does carry as once amended, commish, well, Commissioner Hefner had suggested that we have a mid-year review on that, is there any objection to that? Okay, we'll, we'll add that, the mid-year review, January will be the second amendment, without objection. Commissioner Giles, you, we're asking for the floor.
Yeah, so, um, doing some, doing some work today and, and I guess maybe the end of last week, the, what you were talking about, the thunder and everything, we do have, and that, that business that will open is pretty, their, their items are, are pretty large. So I would think that the, the tax revenue from that in a year would at least, we could at least reduce it by one point anyway, one cent, I call a cent a point. And then, uh, then something else that's come up too, that, that I was looking at today over in the, the building department. So I'd like to make a motion to drop it to 29 cents. And because I think that we can make up that 1%.
I heard a second for that.
Just one, I mean, that's just, it's, at least it's going down.
I, Commissioner, if I could, I, I've identified a cut on page 62 that could save us 30,000 dollars.
Okay.
You cut the last line on our speed prevention from 35,000 to 30, you jump to 5,000 and then puts 30,000 of that back from Street A transfer into the general fund to boost that for another 30,000. That would get you 1/7th of the way there.
And I've, I've already identified, although it's not reoccurring, about 67,000 that will be coming in, but again, that's not reoccurring.
Well, then we, we'd be halfway there.
Yeah, so I just think that we could be able to make that up at least one penny.
Commissioner Hefner?
I don't, I don't know what this mystery business is, but big ticket, I don't know what that means, dollars or like.
Well.
Because it's capped at 2,500. Like, I mean, gentleman mentioned, I think that's on a single item, I think it's state law, single item, it's capped at 2,500.
Local Aqua Option Sales Tax.
Yeah, so even if it's a 100,000 dollar car, it's capped at 2,500, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not talking about no cars, it's just, it's just furnishings, but they're bigger than going out and buying a shirt.
Okay, but if a single item is.
Guess who that is, I mean, but it should be open this year. And we haven't allowed, allocated anything for those sales taxes.
It's opening this year?
If I'm not mistaken, is it not?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm seeing a head nodding in the back, that's.
So.
From planning, and they should know.
So anyway.
Well, do you want to add the cuts then to this in order to justify the reduction, proposed reduction?
The cuts?
That we were talking about in the budget?
That you read one again?
Yeah, yes, sir. Well, then I'll make a motion on page 62, the bottom line there, speed prevention, that that be reduced from 35,000 to 5,000. And then the line above it, it says operations transfer from general fund, this is 700,000 that we moved to general fund, that we only moved 670,000 from the general fund to balance, to absorb the 35, 30,000 dollar cut on line 12143101356. I thought there's a second on that.
What page was that last one on?
Uh, page 62, both, both lines of amending are on page 62. The transfers was 12137810. That's the operations transfer from the general fund, instead of taking 700,000 from the general fund, takes 670 to absorb the 30,000 that was cut from the bottom line. Ms. Hare, have I confused you terribly?
I don't think I'm getting it. You said reduce the transfers to 670 and reduce speed prevention to 3, to 5,000.
Speed preventions? Speed homes?
Yes, properly.
Okay.
Any questions or comments on that? All in favor of, oh, excuse me, Ms. Mulally?
Support the cuts, but not the rate.
Understand. All in favor of the amendment to the, the amendment to the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? So that passes, we're back on, we've got you, got 30,000 of the 210,000 needed. Any other? Uh, just got a note that, uh, the business in question should definitely be open before the end of the calendar year. Do you have any additional cuts to recommend, or did anyone?
I got a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hefner.
So capital projects, um, curd road signal, I think when we originally put this in the budget, it's place over. Oh, it is, it's a million dollars. Have they gone up that much?
Probably, but I, I say it as a place over because it just seems to hang out there. Mr. White, do you have any wisdom?
A million dollars seems high when we were.
It's not just a traffic signal, it, we're also widening curd road to create a separate left and right turn lane as you approach Mountain Hill Road. So it's a road widening plus a signal. Signal's about 500, and it ranges from 5 to 600,000.
Okay.
And then the road widening will be the rest.
Got it, okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other? The 29 cent rate with the, with the changes proposed on page 62. We ready to vote then? The amendment? Right, all in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed that carries? I'm gonna make a motion now back on page two of Ms. Hare's recommendations here to add back the public information officer's position with the top out pay being 4656, which we've discussed, this would be a savings back from the budget of 11,864, about what's previously budgeted. So that's, got a second on that, questions or comments on this? All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? So that carries. The other, the other additional spending was from page 47, which is to add pay adjustments to the fire to align with the PD scale on this. I'm going to make a motion for it, but I want to call the fire chief up because he's going to have to speak to it if he gets a second. So I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the 70,620. Is there a second? Chief, walk us through what the proposal is.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Proposal is there's several positions within the fire department and of course, the pay adjustments for PD that were going in were to kind of align their positions with our department from the pay increases that our department received in 2023. So when those pay adjustments will happen to our department in 2023, no one above the rank of battalion chief was adjusted. It was all the personnel that were working on shift that received those pay adjustments at the time. Police department did not receive the pay adjustments at the time and that's why those pay adjustments are in this year's budget and have so far been voted through to happen. There's three pay adjustments that need to happen to, within the upper command structure that would keep us in alignment with the police department exactly. So that's a portion of the pay adjustments that are in here. The other pay adjustments that are in here are where Dana had put these in here where we have, and typically we absorb these one or two at a time because of the way that we have been training personnel, but because of the cross-training that we're doing with personnel, going to firefighting training that we hired as EMS personnel and receiving that firefighter certification in addition to their EMS licensure, it changes their rank. So those, those pay adjustments are upgraded in rank because of the training and certifications that they have received and their increased capabilities. And that goes both directions on those. The other pay adjustments, the, the other three or other four positions that are pay adjustments are actually positions that are kind of reclassifications. Our EMS lieutenants are on each shift, they're, they're basically our EMS supervisor for the shift, they handle all the issues. They act as a coroner under the ME's office for our jurisdiction or for the city of Mount Juliet. They handle every interaction that we have with the hospitals or other issues that we may have EMS call wise. They are currently classified the same as a fire lieutenant, which the fire lieutenants are assigned to the fire trucks. Don't have nearly responsibility of that position, so the reclassification of these would be for those positions to go from EMS lieutenant to EMS captain. And that is increased, that is included in those, in those pay adjustments. As well as the administrative assistant, Ms. Sharon, as I had mentioned before, moving that position to office manager position because that more aligns with her job duties and descriptions, very similar to the position that they have in Public Works as the office manager. So that, that encapsulates all of the 70,620 dollars that's involved in this, in this pay adjustments for the department.
So I, I see essentially three pieces here, the firefighter to paramedic, the firefighter to a advanced EMT. And that's coming at a total of 22,384. And then there's the chief, deputy chief, EMS chief, that's a total of 11,882. And then you've got the EMS lieutenants, EMS captains, the office administrative assistants, the office manager for another 22,256.
Yes, sir, and then once you total the benefits on top of that, that adds up to the 70,620. That's the differentiation in those numbers.
Mr. Hefner?
Have, have we started? Have we started, I know we have a backup ambulance or two, how many, what's our backup ambulance situation?
We have, we now have backup ambulances more available. We had, we had one of those that we, we have one currently being remounted onto a new chassis.
So we're not doing any transfers, are we? Because we can generate revenue by doing transfers from, from assisted living facilities to the hospital, correct?
We could generate revenue by running non-emergency calls. The situation that that's going to put us in is it's going to put us to where we're pulling emergency ambulances off the street.
That's why I was, that's why I mentioned backup, that's why I was mentioning the backup units. I'm not talking about active in service.
Yes.
Like a BLS service.
Yes, we, we have backup ambulances, but those, those reserve ambulances are typically there for when our ambulances are down for mechanical issues.
So they're not being used unless.
We're having one, yes.
So you could, you could run these services, generate revenue for the city and offset some of these wages you're asking.
You would have to staff them with personnel.
You would hope it would pay for itself, I mean, it generates a lot of insurance.
And when we looked at it in the past, we just don't have the amount of volume within our city because we don't have, we've got one dialysis center, we have some doctor's offices, but you have very limited because we don't have a hospital based.
I see private, I see private companies doing that all around Mount Juliet.
I mean, we can explore going into the, I mean, we can look at what the volume could be and look at potentially staffing that with part-time personnel as a pilot to see how.
Yeah, generate revenue.
See how it would fund.
Yeah, if we have idle equipment that's not dormant, it's not being used unless it's down, we want a main unit down. Now, I wouldn't be running those, making those runs, but if a follow-up or ambulances that are in service, that are responding to calls or working, we, we could put those, those backups to, to use and generate revenue to help offset some of these costs.
Yeah, we can, we can do that as a pilot.
Okay.
Commissioner Giles?
Well, this is, this isn't about this. I want to make a motion when this is finished, but I want Mark to stay up there if you don't mind after we vote on this.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments on these changes? Commissioner Malali?
Oh, I thought you said you're going to make a motion after this? Oh.
Separate item.
All right, so what's on the table is?
The increases for the fire personnel to 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 15, is that right? 15 positions?
Yes.
Total 15 positions, grand total of 70,620.
Okay, I love you, I can't support it, I'm going to have to vote against it. We got, we need a city attorney as an assistant. I would personally rather at this time see that happen rather than these salary increases. I have a problem with the salary increases when we're getting rid of a deputy parks director and I'm probably the most hated person in the room, but I love our fire, my son's a firefighter. But I, I got a problem with raising salaries when people's jobs are being cut and we can't hire another city attorney. I just, I have a problem with that. I'm sorry.
After putting the PIO's position back in, there's no cuts.
That should have never been cut.
It was never cut.
It was cut, can he cut it?
It was cut on paper, but he's been employed the whole time.
Well, of course, because his end date was June 30th.
Correct, that's my point. We just resolved it. But if, if it's, if it would be easier, I would propose that we vote on the three sections separately. The firefighter, paramedics, the command staff, I guess maybe the, and then the EMS lieutenants, EMS captains. Would that be helpful?
Yes, agree.
Okay. Commissioner Hefner, do you want the floor?
Can, can I also codify the pilot for running the services, for running the transports to this? How would we do that?
Would, how would we do that for staffing?
Yeah, we've got a part-time budget. I mean, we would just have to make sure that we stay within that part-time, but we typically use the part-time budget to staff, backstaff and meet minimum staffing levels. I, I can get.
So if I have your word, you're going to do this?
Yeah, we can do it as a pilot study just to see what it will generate and get things moving.
I'm good with that.
It'll probably take us a few weeks to get everything off the ground to get it to roll into where we would have that availability.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Then we've got 2, 4, 6, 8 positions here. These are all firefighters that have been going to advanced EMT or paramedic positions. They've done some additional training, is that fair to?
Yes.
More qualified for the positions here and it's a budget item, a request for 22,389. And then there's some more in here for, there'll be additional top of that for benefits and social security and all the other gifts. But what's listed for salaries is 22,389. All in favor of adding that, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That does pass. The next item is for the command staff, this is a total of 11,882 dollars on this for the three positions in command staff. All in favor of increase, doing the increase of 11,882 dollars plus the benefits on top of that. Please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? That does pass. Then the fourth item is we have a three EMS lieutenants, administrative assistant, the three EMS lieutenants are, the request is to promote to EMS captains, the administrative assistant to office manager. And the cost on that is 22,225 and there'll be additional dollars for benefits on top of that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed?
I thought we were done with EMS.
These are EMS captains positions, though those are frontline.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it again if it's caused confusion?
Yes.
Is there any objection to that? I'll just explain it, I don't think I did a good job, but it, they was, they were three position, the, the previous ones were firefighters going in, they would have got paramedics and studies and approvals done on that, I'm, I'm murdering the example here. But you also had three EMS lieutenants that are being promoted to EMS captain, the administrative assistant to office manager on that. So that's four positions in question. Chief, do you want to add anything on that one?
That's the position I was referring to, that is basically our EMS supervisor that's in charge of everything EMS wise. And their position right now is the same as one of our fire lieutenants who is assigned to one of our engine companies that's on a truck. They have much more responsibilities, that's the reason that we're asking for the reclassifications to the EMS captain position and creating them as a little bit of a separate role. And it kind of delineates their responsibility over the lieutenants that are assigned to the truck as well.
Can we re-vote on that?
Certainly. Any objection? All in favor of adjusting those four positions for 22,225 dollars in salary plus the benefits, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? That does pass, so that will be the full 70,620 dollars. Folks, that wraps up pages one and two of Ms. Hare's suggestions on that. Commissioner Giles, did you have your, want to make your amendment?
Yeah, I do. So when we had the budget workshop, I had to leave because one of my grandchildren was in something and so when I came back, I came at, back in at the end of Public Works presentation. Public Works has two, two positions that, which is the, the fire apparatus mechanic, the senior fire apparatus mechanic and traffic field manager. And they've got certification and of course, these mechanics work on the police cars, if I'm not mistaken. Fire trucks or whatever, your own equipment and as well as the city if needed. So they are asking, and he had asked for a $2 increase on just these two people, an hour. And I feel like that's needed because they have got, have received certification. And the thing about it is we don't want them to go somewhere else and we're just talking about $2. I think they're justified and, and they had an employee leave and so he's made to personnel, he's, he, he's reclassified and his decreases was like 201,899. So I met with them because I wanted to see, again, I came in late, so I didn't get to, well, when I left to come back. So, and that's even after those two positions are reclassified. So my motion is to, to raise their salaries that $2 each.
$2 hourly?
Yes.
There was a second on that. Questions or comments?
Yes.
Is that all agreement, both mechanics, $2 per hour? One mechanic? Mr. White, to make sure we're on the same page.
I'm sorry, it was one mechanic and one field manager. I thought I read that, but maybe I didn't. I had my notes down here, but I thought I read that, traffic field manager, okay.
The one mechanic and the one, what was the second position?
Traffic field manager.
Traffic field manager. Is that agreeable? Good. Questions or comments? We have a, and it was $2 per hour, so it'd be total of each.
Yeah, it's only 5,341 for one of them and 5,441 for this, 5,451 for the other one.
And to reiterate what Commissioner Giles was saying, if you look at our personnel costs from the current budget we're in right now versus the proposed budget, we're cutting personnel costs by 212,000 dollars. That's working with Tim, we've done some creative things to get people paid out of the utility fund instead of general fund and some other, other things we've been doing to cut the general fund costs from our department.
We appreciate that, as well as all the other departments that's been doing that too.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, and also just one more thing, because you guys did listen to me from the last meeting, which was opportunities for in-house, you know, bringing maintenance, any type of options in-house. And by him getting the certification, the chief had explained to me that now if there's, you know, for the new fire trucks or existing fire trucks, those pumps can be rebuilt in-house versus being sent out.
Yeah.
A lot of other maintenance, yeah. So a lot of other maintenance that we could never do in the past, we'd all have to ship that out, now we can be in-house.
That's correct.
Thank you. And I would like for us to be able to call, you know, share those call savings with us at the end of next year, please. So this time at the budget, I'd like to be able to see what we spent in the years past, what we brought back in by, again, showing value. So again, the commission sees that we are bringing folks in-house, we're training them and then they're, you know, again, saving us tax dollars money, so.
Yeah, and I would just say that the, the certification that Justin has is called emergency vehicle technician certification. That gives him the ability to work on the pumps on the apparatus, the ladders on the apparatus, the lift cylinders, all the basically lift cables, a lot of different things on it and essentially certify that those are good for use, which is a huge component for us because otherwise we're calling service vehicles to come here to work on our apparatus at a large cost for those EVT trained personnel to be able to fix that. Our fleet department is great, tremendous job for us. Even adding up fitting stuff that we would pay a lot more at the factory to do, Justin has done that in the past as well. So I mean, this is well justified within that position, it saves us a lot of money. Additionally, Justin will be going to training in July through the new, through the manufacturer of the truck we're purchasing and he will actually be certified as a warranty tech through Sutton. And so he will be able to work on our trucks and actually get paid by Sutton to work on our own apparatus. And so under warranty work, so that's a great benefit to us as well.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Commissioner Malali?
All right, just keeps going back and forth, what's on the table?
The salary adjustments for the two positions, mechanic and the signal.
For Public Works?
I apologize for whoever's title I'm murdering. Commissioner Hefner? Did you, was you ask for the floor?
No, after this, I've got.
Well, all in favor of the adjustments, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That does pass. Commissioner Hefner, do you want the floor?
I'd like to add back or attempt to add back in at least six months assistant city attorney. The starting salary is going to be 90,000, so I'm asking to put in 45. So this person wouldn't, this position wouldn't be funded until the second half of the year, which would give us time to do the six-month review. And if the six-month review finances are coming in, things are looking good, mystery shops opening, and we can fund it for the second half of the year. So I'm asking to put it in at least now, so it's funded for the second half, so one half, one half your salary for assistant city attorney.
I'll second Commissioner Hefner. I, I'll just, I'll add, you, you made it in first reading and, and I didn't have a problem with it, I was just like, well, in the context of the other stuff in here, I was like. Commissioner, Vice Mayor?
So, and that's just with the, the base salary, that's not including all the other options, correct?
Correct. Let's look at the, let's look at the.
Let's look at the, let's do the financial review in six months.
Okay.
If it still warrants it and justifies it, then we'll go ahead and do a budget amendment to add additional, whatever additional license fee, there's a couple of items in there that this person would need, but I at least want to codify it now, so at least we can set aside half, half a year's salary. But again, reviewing, we have an opportunity in six months to look at actuals, and if it's still warranted, then we pull the trigger, send the, you know, offer letter and.
Sure. Well, my only concern is, again, that, you know, like, so you're saying we're going to go ahead, offer this position to someone? Is that correct?
It's going to take about six months.
Sure.
It'll be funded.
It'll be funded for six months, and then from there, then we'll be able to review.
Speed calming hump event in January. So we have to pump the brakes, so we can.
I'm just going to ask this, if it's okay, Mayor, real quick, I mean, just to make sure, again, just like we asked these gentlemen up here, again, because you and I have talked about this, where you're showing the value of what the call saving is, this way, that could be also an opportunity, because again, you can't be in two places at one time, so if we're paying another firm to be able to pick up the slack because we're so busy in certain areas, this would be an opportunity for us to show value for call savings, right? So if we can just track that as well, that'd be great.
And I, just, just to clarify on this, you say six months, that would, meaning this budget takes effect July first, the position would, would take effect funding January first?
Correct.
If you want to cost on that, it's seventy-nine thousand three forty-eight.
With benefits, seventy-nine thousand three forty-eight?
Can you get a attorney for seventy-nine thousand?
She said that's a half-year.
Oh, that's the half-year. Okay, with, okay, thank you, I'm like, wow, we're dumpster diving for attorneys.
We're not dumpster diving for attorneys, no, we're not doing that. It's going to end up costing us more money in the long run. Sometimes you get what you pay for.
You don't want channel two hearing that one?
No. Are you any questions and comments? All in favor of the half-year attorney's position? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that does pass. Got a question for the recorder. How many amendments are we on?
Nine.
Nine, okay.
Great job, by the way.
Yeah, thank you, I, I normally mark, but I don't. I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion, Ms. Hired also said, sent over pages three and four, the recommendations, which included some additional cuts. These were seen to be mostly targeted towards our enterprise fund, but they also eliminated the need for the three percent rate increase on the sewer fund. I'll make the motion that we adopt the cuts listed here and remove the three percent increase on the sewer fund. Is there a second for that? Second, questions or comments? Pages three and four, it's, it's from the document that Ms. Hired had sent over, but Dana, would you just briefly walk us through it?
Sure. So the first one is the capital projects fund, it's just to adjust some of the capital projects, and, which reduces the transfers from the general fund to the capital projects fund. That total reduction was one million fifty thousand. Then on the stormwater fund, there's a reduction of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand for a street sweeper, and then in the sewer fund, two projects were adjusted, the net effect on that was zero, it was mainly just moving money from one project to another after the bids came in, removing a diesel service truck for eighty-nine thousand. Tim has also requested to pull his personnel request, he wants to hold off a year for that. And then I had gotten a letter from Metro Billing, they've overbilled us quite a bit, and so when I went back and looked at my projections for next year based on those actual numbers, I was able to reduce that by two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. And then that, I was able to, with those cuts, was able to reduce the sewer billing revenue by two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars, and just take out that three percent increase that I had projected. I think we'll be fine, and we're going to do a rate study this coming year, so that will help us sort of make sure our rates are, are in line and on track where they should be.
All right. Questions or comments?
Got a quick question.
Vice Mayor?
So, quick question, so that, that, you said it was two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in savings that was over?
The, I reduced the sewer revenue by two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars.
And was that added on here, or was that something you just came across? Sorry.
Well, no, no, when I calculated my, my revenue for the year, I just reduced it based on the cuts that were made above.
Okay. All right, I just didn't know if we find another two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, maybe we can drop another cent, just didn't know if we.
This is sewer fund.
All right, gotcha.
Not legally.
Wherever your counting pennies over here, we're trying to make sure we're good. Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure, thanks.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That does carry on that. So we're back on the budget as ten times amended, with a, with a property tax rate of twenty-nine cents, which would equal a hundred and sixty-three point six-four percent increase. I know, I know you've heard all kinds of numbers out there, there would be no sewer increase where we're currently at right now, and no positions eliminated, so. Commissioner Malili?
All right, we're on the original, right?
Back on the.
Okay. I have a question. I think it's page forty-seven in the budget. In the fire department, total salaries have increased from five-point-four million in fiscal year twenty-four to six-point-five million in fiscal year twenty-six. This is an increase of twenty-point-five percent. The benefits in fiscal year twenty-four were eight-hundred-and-ten thousand and are now one-point-five million in fiscal, fiscal year twenty-six. Why did the benefits number increase ninety-three percent over the same timeframe?
Our insurance went up, more than likely, that's, not only the insurance went up quite a bit, but retirement percentage that we put in went up as well. And it's probably due to the EMS that was hired and the firefighters moving through the pay scale with their pay going up, it drives the rest of those up as well.
All right, police benefits only increased fifty-eight point six percent.
They're prob, well, I mean, it just depends on the makeup of, of how their insurance selection goes, and could be the, they're, more of their people are topped out because they've been here longer. I'd have to look to see the details.
All right, turnout gear line is, I don't know what page that's on, turnout gear line is overspent in fiscal year twenty-five budget was fifty-two thousand five hundred, and projected actual is ninety-four thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Fire insurance was budgeted at seventy-five thousand and projected spend is one-twenty-nine nine seventy-six. What is our policy for overspending budget lines?
If they're covering, you can overspend on one line as long as you have enough money in your budget to cover it with another line item, but that might be, let me look at that No, that insurance is, is not overspent, it was a, it's a formula that's in there, and I didn't catch that. It, it's not, it won't be overspent. I'll have to go back and look and see what the actuals are, but that insurance, the projection is too high.
All right, so do we need to make a motion here?
No, it's just passed.
Okay, all right. The, on the question on the capital projects fund, and I don't know what page it is, the beginning fund balance on July one is eighteen million six forty, and then ending fund balance projected for June thirty next year is only fifty thousand.
It's like that every year.
It's like that every year? All right, do we have to make any bond payments in the fiscal year twenty-seven out of this account? If so, how are we planning to pay for those payments?
Not out of capital projects, those are paid out of the debt service fund, and they're funded by transfers from the general fund.
Debt service, all right. All right, um, another, okay, of the list of capital projects, all right, what does the total debt payment do during the fiscal year twenty-six? Are those payments factored into the budget? Are we able to cover those payments in future years with the revenue projected and the fund balances that we will have after this year?
That's a lot. So the bond payments that we make are out of the debt service fund. They are, they are funded mostly by transfers from the general fund, they will probably stay around three-point-five, three-point-six million per year. We also have impact fees that, it's a revenue source that goes directly into that fund to help with those bond payments. So the total bond payment next year with all three of them is four million, four million fifty-six thousand three oh five.
Okay, got a question about insurance. Have you gotten new quotes for insurance this year for both building, building content and workers' compensation? Are you sure the budgeted numbers will cover any increases? In both fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, workers' comp in line one-ten dash four-seven-two-hundred dash one-four-six was twenty-two thousand a year. It's budgeted for sixteen thousand one seventy-four for fiscal year twenty-six, is that enough?
It's based on payroll, so as, as we fill in the payroll numbers, it's calculated based off their salaries and the payroll.
All right.
Also, just one more point, we do plan on bidding the city's insurance out this year. We haven't done that for a couple of years, so we're going to take a look at that.
All right, if we got a total revenue.
Commissioner Giles wanted to make a comment on that one item?
Sure.
We have a mod change too on the workers' comp, and I'm not for sure. And so depending on what kind of, how many claims that we had and the amount during the previous year after that audit, that can go down sometimes, so that may be where that adjustment is. Okay? And everybody's given a mod after, if you've got so much of, of compensation or salary, in other words, you, you're, you're assigned a mod, it can be one, it can be less, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
So that may be where that happens.
All right, total revenues are about fifty-three million, that was set at forty-four cents, and now it's less, and expenses are over seventy-three million, which I know we've had some cuts now, but how will you, how will we function next year? The total expenses, will the total expenses next year be less than fifty-three million? And if not, where does the money come from?
I know we won't spend everything that we appropriate, I can't tell you how much that's going to be. I, fingers crossed, hope that our revenues come in higher than what I projected, trying to be conservative, but I don't know, honestly. It's, it's something that we have to look at year to year to see where we're at and what the departments need.
Okay. I have a question about WEMA and our ambulance service. I've gotten several calls about being double taxed, we're still paying for WEMA, and I know why we started our own ambulance service, because that was a problem, but supposedly they got that fixed now. So are we being double taxed, and maybe the chief might want to address it, or, I've had a lot of questions about that. Are we being double taxed? We're, we have an ambulance service, but yet we're still paying for WEMA.
Yeah, true.
I don't, I don't know that you're actually being double taxed, I mean, you are, you are paying for what WEMA has response-wise here. WEMA does back us up whenever we need them in the city, and we, of course, back them up as well. But as I mentioned the other day, we're, before we had EMS in the city, we had, we were not having, we were having response times exceeding twenty minutes within the city consistently. And now we are not experiencing anything close to those response times in our city. I mean, we haven't seen anything even close to a fifteen-minute response time since we started our ambulance service. And so the value of what we have EMS-wise, I will defend to the hilt because it is very valuable to our city. It is saving lives, we're providing service at a much higher level, and, and now if you look at just the west side of one-oh-nine, take from Gladeville all the way up through Lakeview, in the past, we had four ambulances on this entire side of the county, we now have seven. And so that's a better thing for us, because we have three ambulances covering the city of Mount Juliet, where in the past, WEMA had two ambulances covering not just the city of Mount Juliet, but the unincorporated areas outside, around the city of Mount Juliet as well. And so it is a much better service, so to say that we're being double taxed, yeah, you're paying taxes for both the county and city services on several regards, but for the ambulance service that you have, you're getting a much higher level of service within those realms.
Okay, well, I was just, I had some questions on that, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Hefner?
I wanted to add to that, because I remember distinctly, one of the motivating, motivating factors for me, at the time, we, we looked at this, is WEMA was shutting down fire stations because they couldn't staff them. I think at one point, there were fifty percent vacancy in terms of personnel. So, and then they started moving fire stations away from our citizens and out into the county. I mean, Belinda City, they went out to Central Pike. So they put us in a position where we, we had, we had to, and I support it a hundred percent, and I still do. So, yes, we are providing a much better service, quicker response times, saves lives, especially if you've got a heart condition, seconds matter, not minutes. So, yeah, I don't regret that at all.
If I remember, it was two stations were the, two stations outside the city with the first on the cut list, and then the third one on the cut list was the station here behind City Hall. And at the same time, we couldn't get a commitment for a third ambulance in there, so it's an expense, but it's just, if we're not taking care of our citizens, what are we up here for?
And I will go over this statistic once again, and many of you have heard this, when we were, when we were running two ambulances, when our, our service first started, for the first six months, we ran two ambulances instead of three. We didn't even have the station, a third station open at the time we started EMS. But when we were still running just two ambulances, just covering the city limits alone, we were still having to call WEMA in for mutual aid about thirty-two times a month on average. And so that has now dropped to where we call them less than about eight times a month on average. And so that shows you how better the response times are, having that third ambulance on, just covering our city limits than what we had in the past.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, just to question something that was discussed earlier, which I'm confused on, the deputy parks director position. I'm confused on what y'all discussed, that it wasn't taken out of the budget, it will be as of June thirty.
The, the budget as it is right now has a deputy parks director in that.
Right.
We had, we had two in there, and one of those that was serving as the deputy parks director is now serving as the interim director, and there's already, money's budgeted for the director position, and there's money budgeted for a deputy director. Those, while saying, everybody's salaries that we have on staff is covered right now. We as a city, well, more so the city manager has, will be tasked with what action he wants to take with this, with the parks director, and I would suggest whoever that winds up being, we reevaluate that org chart from the, whether it's existing coming back, or a new, or a permanent, or whatever that may be, which with this table, that's not a decision for us, but whoever that may be, we evaluate what that, what that park structure's going to be. But in the budget as it is right now, we've got the money for all those positions, and no one's losing a job based on budget cuts, at least.
Okay, so beginning July first, one of those won't be there?
One of the deputy parks directors will not be there, but there's a place for everybody who currently works for the city right now.
All right, so the current person who serves as deputy parks director, not the interim.
Has a place.
Currently.
And on July one.
All right, that, that's totally confusing. So I would like to make a motion, I think you started to do it earlier, to continue the current deputy parks director position, known as Melinda Troutman, in the new budget, and not eliminate it. So I'm, I'm really confused on what you're saying.
I'm saying the money's all there to pay everybody, no one's losing their job unless they chose to take retirement. So we, we're not eliminating anyone.
Can I give you the scenario, based on this evening? If, let's say, for example, Rocky's offered his job back, well, now we've got two parks directors and one deputy parks director. So if Rocky gets hired back, somebody's not funded, because we only have the position of one parks director and one deputy parks director. Now, I don't know if Rocky's going to be offered his job back or not, but I'm just saying, he, he mentioned it earlier, so if the, if that does happen, you've got one position that's. So if the if that does happen, you've got one position that's not funded. One.
Correct. Yeah. And if our interim director is hired, we're all kosher, as it would say. But him and the city manager may want to come back and add an admin or an events coordinator or something else or whatever.
Okay. So.
We're just kind of up in the air.
Yeah. So what's going to happen to Melinda Troutman's job July 1st?
Nothing. I mean.
She'll still have a job?
Yes, it's funded in the budget, yes. It's hired. I mean, is there money in the budget for that position?
Yes. Essentially, Ross, who was the who is also a deputy parks director, moves into the parks director position in an interim basis. So there is a, there's money in there for his parks, him as parks director and Melinda as deputy parks director. And the other, the other deputy parks director is removed.
No.
All right. So at first reading, when y'all didn't support saving her job.
Well, let's say it this way. At first reading, when I didn't support having two deputy parks directors positions and the Parks Department being the only department with two deputy directors, that's would be my approach to it. But yes, I did not vote for it. I didn't vote for adding that position back that had been eliminated.
So things have changed. So what you're saying on record is, starting July 1st, Melinda Troutman will have her same job?
Yes. I mean, she is funded in here. She will have a new boss, but that's however that works.
Well, I know that, but.
I can't say what her boss will having her do, but it's funded.
Okay. So you're saying there's no need to motion to save her job?
I'm saying we've already got the money in the budget now.
Okay. It's on record. She still has a job. Okay. All right. So I would like to make a motion. These are salaries that I support. I motion to reclassify four park laborers to facility maintenance, which is 18,646. I motion to add a full time parks clerk position of 71,364. Reclassify one parks clerk to parks lead, $2,862, totaling 92,872.
Is there a second?
I'd like to see if we could split this back.
Well, how about this? Commissioner, I I they may be support by that. But would would you be amenable to breaking that apart in smaller chunks that are easily?
Yeah. You don't want me to read one at a time?
By us.
One at a time? All right. A motion to reclassify four park laborers and facility, two facility maintenance, $18,646.
Four parks.
Four park, park laborers to facility maintenance.
To facility maintenance. So it's essentially you're you're changing the classification of four employees.
Yes.
And that total was how much?
$18,646.
Okay. And it's got a motion and second. I've got a question. What does that mean exactly?
Was it what?
What does that mean exactly? Is it just a different salary or is it different, different work?
Well, you could ask Ross if you wanted to.
Want to come up there?
These were in the budget that were cut.
Okay. These were proposed, but did not make it past the initial cuts. Yes, sir. Explain to me what we're, what we're attempting to do.
The facilities maintenance position that is currently in the salary now would come with an increase in pay. We originally put this in the budget. You know, Rocky was here when we discussed this too as well. But we originally put it in the budget to try to get these guys paid for more what they do. They're not just parks laborers. They, you know, we do plumbing maintenance, electrical maintenance. We come up here, most of what you see in here, trim work, B board. We've done all this work inside City Hall when we revamped it. So they're just trying to get them more paid for a line for the other work they do besides the mowing, the groundskeeping, things of that nature.
So it's just a realignment to match the job.
Right.
Understand. Come with questions? Vice Mayor.
I know this was brought back up. And and I appreciate the commissioner for bringing this back up. And I also appreciate the fact that they're bringing this stuff in house to do the work because we we do see value. And and I know the past director and obviously you being the director today, advocating for these staff members. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. Your floor.
All right. Add a add full time parks clerk position one at 71,630, $71,364.
Can you give me the dollar amount again? So this is, this is an additional position above what we've got. Is that correct?
Correct. Be adding a full time clerk.
Yeah. Thank you. Questions or comments? Vice Mayor.
So I know, obviously, this is kind of a curve ball. If you guys could, can you elaborate on? Because I know that we've, let's see here. We had a coordinator that had left suddenly. We had another individual that was removed from that position, then given, I guess it was two, I guess mower folks, right? So we eliminated a position and then we reallocated those funds for something. Is this to backfill that position? Can you elaborate on that or?
Mower positions were originally there.
Okay.
It was more, we was trying to make, but he got to save money to move. We offered to move that, that position to go to a mower and then therefore eliminate that position. He chose not to. He chose to another open position in another department. So we rehired from the outside to replace the two mowers that were already there. The two labor positions.
Okay.
This be just to help us in the office with our clerks and everything, just get back to a full strength team.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hefter.
So this is this clerk position. How many do we currently have?
Currently, we have.
You have two full time?
Two full time, three part time clerks. Correct.
So what do they? You forgive me. What do they do?
Clerks?
Yeah.
Well, the community center, you know, the 12 hour a day operations at France, that they were six days a week, we're open eight to eight. So we have to cover 12 hours of, you know, office being covered. They work the window. They take care of the janitorial duties inside, you know, cleaning, keeping up the bathrooms inside the community center. So.
There's reservations.
Reservations. And then right now, with the splash pad being open sometimes, we have to ask them to go outside and help, you know, cover the splash pad vacations and other things.
And they also go outside to do trash.
What Dana, on on our work comp, part time is not covered in our premiums, are they? They they only look at full time? I mean, we do benefits on part time or just full time?
Part time's included.
Okay. Is there any? Where I'm going with this is rather than maybe one full time, maybe two part time, additional part time, is there any overall cost savings?
Part times don't get benefits. So.
Okay. Could you, could you get by with two part time versus one full time?
I would say we could probably make it work. You're in a lot of issues part time, not having, as far as just getting them to commit to a full schedule, the hours they come in. They want, you know, everybody wants a full 29 hours starting out. Then next thing you know, they're there three or four months and they want to back off to 15 hours. Or, you know, you start running through them. We have probably a harder time with our part time employees, not the ones we have now, but in the past, you know, just getting that commitment to get the full 29 hours or whatever it is. We're a lot, I think it's 29, we use it a lot for them week.
We also have to consider the activity center at some point.
Right.
We're going to have to open that up. Right now, we don't have.
Yeah. Vice Mayor.
So with this right here, obviously, there's some redundancy here. So when vacation time, are we looking at saving opportunities for overtime? Because again, if you guys are off, we have two part time individuals. They won't have the same authority to make some decisions. But if somebody is off, that full time employee is going to be more invested and be able to be, I guess, better cross trained. Is that, is that a better or fair statement?
Yeah. Yes, sir. That'd be one advantage of it, for sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You know, I I ask in the past, and I know we got some software, because you mentioned one of the things is reservations, that we have the ability to do some reservations possibly through our website that's not being utilized?
We have reservations on our website. We still have a lot of phone calls. You know, people need to get help over the phone or, you know, they still want to come in, they want to see and the facility and make.
Well, and 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 that was in the context too of like court reservations and other things as well.
Right.
You'll have to go to the microphone so we can get you, get you recorded.
So Civic Plus and Civic Rec kind of coincide together. So and it's, and Travis might be better with this too. It works hand in hand. So the system that we have right now, I wouldn't want to deviate from it, if that makes any sense. Because it's, it just works better for us, if that's the question that I'm getting.
I've just seen similar stuff used at other departments. I brought it up before and I just.
I've never, we've never done it through Civic Plus, the reservation like that. I'm sure if there's a way, then we can definitely try to figure it out. But like I said, Civic Rec is just another addition to Civic Plus. And it's just for recreational systems. Yeah. So.
Well, I mean, just in the context of if we could automate something and.
I got you.
And, you know.
We're willing to do whatever it takes. So.
Automation and stuff like that comes to work every day, generally, unless it breaks totally.
Senator, come on.
Right now, they're working on the parking lot. It'll probably open with the police department, I would imagine, once everything construction up there is completely, completely completed. We'll probably open the activity center around the same time the new headquarters.
Which is what? What are we saying? When's? Give me a date, a month.
September. They're saying September.
Could we, could we look to fund this half a year? So starting in the second half of the year?
We probably could. Like I said, a large part of what we're running into right now with our schedule is with the staff that we have lost. When it comes to people needing off for vacations or surgeries or any things of that nature. I mean, we're just, we're running thin right now as far as having enough people to cover.
We don't know.
Seven days a week.
Got you. Okay. All right. Good.
You want us? All right. All in favor of adding the 71,364 for the full time parks clerk position? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Commissioner Malley.
All right. Reclassify one parks clerk to parks lead, which is $2,862.
2,862?
Mm hmm.
Is there a second? Okay. We got a second on that. What are we doing here?
One of the main reasons to reclassify this to a lead position is with the loss of the events coordinator. Like I said, we lost another position. We're going to ask, we'll be asking this employee to take on a few more responsibilities with our clerks as far as, you know, she'll probably be handling all the scheduling, some things of that nature, programs, scheduling of the programs and keeping up with them and the contact and their contacts as well. To also probably be assisting, not organizing the full events, but still be assisting in some of our contacts with events. Maybe, you know, like order jobs, things that we schedule every time. She'll be in charge of, you know, some of those things as well.
Yes. Yes, my my thought on this is, is if if we wait until the, we get a parks director named on this, what if they want to go a different direction with the way that's structured?
That would be a possibility, I would assume.
I mean, we've, we've got the personnel in place now, but it's just me playing devil's advocate.
It's a way to try to get her aligned with her salary with, like I said, some extra responsibilities we'll be asking her to take on with the loss of some of these other positions.
Understand.
Try to cover our bases and not put too much of a load on one particular employee.
Vice Mayor.
So, and I apologize, I was multitasking and I failed terribly. What was the amount?
$2,862.
Okay. And this is also going to give an opportunity to, to, I mean, is she already currently doing the work? Is that correct?
She, with the recent changes, we have had taken a place. She has currently started doing some of these things already.
And has she stepped up and provided value?
She has, she has. She's taken hold and she's very eager to help in any way she can.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. We're back on the budget as, is that 13, 13 times amended? Okay. Any other questions or comments on the budget? I've got one comment to add, though. By my quick review, I show about 300 cities in the state of Tennessee to do levy a property tax. And if this passes on second reading, we were, we were the fifth lowest on this. But the jump now would put us to the 18th lowest. And that would be 18th lowest out of 300. And I would dare to wager, without looking at the facts, that we were the only ones that's providing ambulance service and a number of things that we do in that ballpark. So even what's proposed here on this budget that's been amended 13 times, still a tremendous value for the cost, in my opinion. Miss Hare.
Can I just clarify with the original amendment? Did you, did you add the 2 million in for parkland? I did not capture that in here.
No.
Okay.
I I didn't hear amendment on that to add it, but.
I just wanted to clarify.
I. Commissioner Hefter.
I I would, I would like to add that as an amendment. So I do motion to add $2 million in revenue to the budget for the sale, for the sale of non parkland. So it would be for non parkland related land because that goes to parks in this budget. So.
Sell of land, 2 million?
Correct.
Is there a second? All right. We have a second. Questions or comments? Commissioner Malley.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I think, I don't think it's dependable. So for that reason, I'm not going to vote for it.
Okay. All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. On the budget is 14 times amended. We ready to vote?
Um, hold on. Yeah.
All right. All in favor of the budget is 14 times amended, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And the budget does pass on second reading with a vote of 421. And it's just past 10 o'clock, so. Yeah, we're just doing really good. We've got one last item on the agenda. And that is 12C, a resolution of the city of Mount Juliet, Board of Commissioners stating its intent to place a $14 million bond referendum before the voters for the purpose of constructing an aquatic center. I hear a motion. Second, any questions or comments on 12C? Second, any questions or comments on 12C? Commissioner Malley, you recognized?
All right. Since the $14 million bond just passed in the budget, what is the purpose of this?
Well, $14 million bond is listed in the budget as a placeholder, but if we choose to, um, and it says if we do choose to pursue that bond, which would take additional action involving bond counsel to do this. Uh, there is a provision under Tennessee code that allows municipalities to send bonds to uh, the voters for approval for the, for taking out the bond. So if we choose, and it states if we do choose to move ahead with the $14 million bond, uh, it would be placed before the voters on a ballot for the question thereof. Do you want to, uh, assume the $14 million in bond?
All right. Well, this is confusing because the next step, since this already passed two readings, it's in the budget to come out a hotel motel tax for the bond. The next step is to send out for bids. So if that process rolls, the ball rolls on that, we get the bids in, and we move forward with the building. So what, I don't understand the purpose of this.
Has to be taken by the board in order to move forward on the bond. Just putting it in the budget doesn't, doesn't make it move forward.
Yeah, it's really just a placeholder in the budget to recognize it. It doesn't change our financial position, other than the fact that we're accounting for the $14 million bond. If we do in fact take out the $14 million bond, then that does change our financial positions greatly.
Commissioner Hefter.
I think what it effectively does is it pushes it down two years. Because this referendum is on, would be on the 20, or one year. Is it, is it 21?
Next, next year.
Next year. So it pushes it one year.
Roughly 11 months-ish, sorry, 13 months-ish.
Is, is there a cost to, to the city to put a referendum on the ballot?
I, I'm not sure.
Traditionally, if we've held it with an already scheduled election, and that's, that's why I specified that for the August ballot. Traditionally, we've been able to do that, uh, as part of that election. It's already occurring. Because the Election Commission is just able to put an extra question on there. It doesn't cost them anymore to do that operation. Now, um, maybe that, uh, change, or maybe our city recorder knows something different on that, but that's always been the, uh, oh, you only had 14 of them to go over, so. But the question, the question was, when we do a referendum, as long as it's been on our regularly scheduled, uh, ballot, has there been any charge to the city to do that? And I don't. Yeah, if we do it, if we call for a special election, then we're responsible for the cost.
Hmm. Can I amend this?
You're a elected official, so you're, so you're welcome to try.
I'm gonna try it. I'm gonna try it. So I'd like to add, if we're going to do a referendum, I'd like to add, add term limits to this referendum.
That would be a separate charter amendment. Which is fine. I mean, I, I think it would need to be written up as a charter amendment, which is different than this, which, because this is something.
Well, the idea is, if we're going to put something on the ballot to the voters, I've been trying to get a referendum on the ballot to weigh in on term limits since 2020. So if this isn't the right, and I'm asking city attorney this, i- if this isn't the right vehicle to do this.
Well, we, would it be appropriate on here to, to just state in here that our intent, because this just says our intention is if we go down the path of a bond, to send it out to a referendum? Could we amend this just to say it's our intention to do a charter amendment as well?
I would probably do them separately.
Okay.
This is really focused on the, you can still do that, but just as a separate.
Okay, that's fine. Yes. Okay.
It's just better if it's done during the general election, so that way we don't have to pay for a special election.
You know what I mean, though, to make that motion, it can come as a.
Anytime. Okay. All right.
Commissioner Malley.
When do we get to send out bids? What has to happen before the bids go out?
Uh, we'd have to actually bring something to the board to approve the, the bond, not just the budget.
It's usually done through resolution, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, so we approved it in the budget, and so I need to bring a resolution at the next meeting to move forward with the bids.
Yeah, can I get with you on, on the process?
No, I need an answer tonight.
You'd have to bring like a bond resolution to the board. We, yeah. Yes, you can bring a bond resolution to the next meeting. But you, it would have to take action of the board to move forward with it.
All right, so if it fails, then what?
We don't borrow at that time?
Okay, so the rec center is dead?
Not necessarily. You could bring it back at a later date and try again. It's still, it's, it's still in the budget.
All right. So if the intent of this resolution is to put it before the voters, right? Then I'm, I motion, see, here's my problem. I think this is, uh, somewhat orchestrated to kill the deal anyway. Because as I stated at three committee meetings that we had, we did not have unanimous, unanimous support. So if the intent of this resolution is to put it before the voters and let them decide if they want it or not, then why don't we remove the $14 million limit? Because we all know that in over a year from now, when this goes before an election, there's no way that facility is going to get built for $14 million.
Oh, I think that's a true statement to debate.
Absolutely. So, you know, if, if that is the true intent of this resolution, to let the voters decide if they want a rec center, I think we should remove that bond limit and let the voters say what they want, which is two Olympic-sized pools, a Jimmy Floyd.
Commissioner, that, what I'm bringing forward is supported in state law. I don't know how you would present such a question to the voters without a, without state law, authorizing the city to be able to ask such a question. Like if you want to, if you're asking like the smorgasbord, or what, what do you want, how many pools or something like that? There's only state law supporting a referendum on the bond itself.
All right, so.
But if, if you wish to just amend this to remove the $14 million and say put the bond for the aquatics center before the, for the voters, um, I think, I think I would support that, because I'd be interested to see, uh, what the true cost is this, is going to be anyway, and ask the voters.
All right, so if this passes tonight, then what is the point of bringing a bond resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If this passes tonight, what is the point of bringing a bond resolution to, so that we can do bids?
Well, then you shouldn't bring it.
Right, exactly. So, um, I'm just going on what this says here, and it also says whereas operational and personnel cost is possibly would require a future property tax increase. So, see, that's the beauty of where it is now. With, because the $14 million, the estimates we got came in under that. So if we, but that, those numbers are for now. Now, not in a year, year and a half from now. So that's only now. So we all know this is not going to be good if, you know, with that $14 million, the, 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 the deal is dead. So, um, hold on. I motion to defer this until after I bring the resolution bond, and that's my ignorance. I didn't know. I truly didn't know. So I motion to defer the, what is the deadline to get something on the ballot for uh, either August 26th or November?
I think it, generally the budget, I mean, excuse me, the budget, talked about that a little bit. Generally, the ballot is set, you know, 90 days or so out before that. We have to get any questions to the, to the Election Commission before the ballot is set, because they have to publicly advertise that, that ballot itself for a certain period. And I don't know what that period is off the top of my head, but it's generally seems like it's about 90 days out.
So it wouldn't be a problem to defer. Right? We're not up against the deadline.
We're not up against the deadline. It's just saying that our, the resolution just says what it says. It's our intention to send this bout to a, to a referendum.
I motion to defer this resolution until after I bring a bond resolution to the board to be voted on, up or down.
Any questions or comments on the advisement of deferral? I, I mean, to me, whether you bring a resolution before or after, it's still my intention to have the voters weigh in on it. So I, I don't, I don't see the advisement of deferral on it, but, um, any other comments?
All in favor of deferral for how long, Commissioner? Do, do you bring your resolution?
Until after that is voted on.
So all in favor of deferral until the bond resolution is voted on? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to deferral?
Okay, then I motion to have this $14 million bond cap removed.
So you, so intention is, is to be able to set the bond at any number and be able to send it out for.
Well, sure, why not? Uh, the intent is to let the voters decide what they want, so why not let them figure out, you know, and then you figure out how you're going to pay for it, whether it's a property tax increase.
I figure out.
Or whatever. So I, I just say, if that's the intent, give them what they want, and then you figure out how to pay for it. So I motion to remove that $14 million bond cap.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, second.
Uh, Commissioner Hefter.
So I, I thought the $14 million was based on projection, and which I understand can fluctuate, our hotel motel sales tax. I thought the idea behind it was whatever the bond amount was, we were going to make sure that the hotel motel sales tax covers the, the bond payment.
Initially, that was the intent. I was asked what, uh, how much could we afford if we did a million dollars a year for 20 years, I think it was. And I just used an estimated rate, which I'm, is probably close to what it is now, but it may have fluctuated. But that was, $14 million was the end result of that.
Okay, so so if we're saying we're going to go higher, we're saying we're going to have to pay for it some other way in addition to the hotel motel sales tax.
You don't fund whatever, because the hotel motel can't fund it.
It won't fund the operational one either.
And I mean, that was my whole purpose for wanting to send this to the voters, was to be able to field those type of questions that, you know, we can pay for the bond with the hotel motel tax. Uh, but, uh, how do we pay for the operational cost and personnel cost? Yeah, I, I, I just wanted, I just wanted to weigh in on the community on this. It's like, it's not just the hotel motel tax that we're talking about. We got, talking about ongoing expenditures for operations, new personnel, insurance, all those things that are.
We presented the plan to you at the work session. We had that planned out. You weren't here.
That is correct.
You listened, I think. You weren't here at the work session, but I think you listened in. So we brought, we presented a plan after the committee met three times. And we presented a plan during the work session of how we were going to build the building and fund operations and personnel in the next two budget cycles. We, we, including insurance and sewer, I got all that. So the plan was there. And might I remind the board that the resolution for the 11.4 million initially passed, the resolution that increased it to 14 million passed. So, you know, so that set the motion.
Yeah, and as you pointed out.
Supported by this board.
And as you just pointed out, the, I was not present. There had been a funeral that I had, had attended. I was not present there at the workshop, and I was not present for when the, the finish line was moved on what we were talking about. When I voted for $11 million, I mean, it was, it included a lot of things, and I, you know, I kind of took the approach. Be kind of an idiot not to vote to get all this stuff for $11 million. And then when it, and lo and behold, it becomes 14 million, and then it's not all these things that was included in it.
But those were just ideas. They weren't set in stone, presented from someone else.
Oh, but that resolution said.
Yes, and we changed that. I know you weren't here, but it did pass by three votes.
It did.
Vice Mayor.
Again, I mean, obviously, there's so many questions that, you know, that I have tonight, and I know we've got a lot of staff here, so I'll be respectful. Real quick, if you can, uh, Ms. Dana, um, the, the potential, um, levels that we can borrow right now, where are we at today? Like, what, I mean, like, what is our percentage that we can borrow without affecting our AAA bond rating?
So we set a, uh, according to our debt policy, a limit of $1,400 per capita, which is, I think around, hold on. About 61.6 million.
And where are we at today?
I want to say we're around 56, but let me double check.
One I'm getting at here, Commissioner, is that, you know, and if we, if we need to find out where we're going to come up with the money, and I, listen, I agree with you. We, we need something, but maybe this is an opportunity for the fact that our city is growing so much. We looked at, um, a few buildings where there was some opportunity for third-party investments, where they can be able to come in and help sponsor this. Maybe it could be that partnership where the city takes the land, leases it out for a dollar, and we provide the land, which is usually the, the big part of the expenditure, right? And then we can be able to get some third-party investments in there. So by the time that this comes out, you know, from, you know, for the next 13 months, then that's some homework that, you know, can be going back to and see about looking at other, you know, other opportunities. Because we know we don't have it in the motel, you know, uh, tax, and we can't raise that up. The other side of it is the fact that the operation side, we know that, you know, that, you know, again, looking back at this, we have somebody, and I appreciate their time, when they volunteered their time to, to design a building for us. They gave us some baseline numbers. Now, after understanding what the citizens are asking for, like you said, kind of like the Taj Mahal, you know, um, there is some understanding that as you go bigger, that's the operation cost. That's, that's increasing everything. Your mechanical, your electrical, your plumbing, everything. And then at the same time, you know, we're still looking at how are we going to fund it? So to go back to Ms. Dana, uh, where are we at? You said 6.1 million is our, is our cap.
We're at 38.9 right now, so about 22 million.
So we have about $22 million, and then once we hit that threshold, then we've maxed out our credit card, right?
According to our policy.
According to our policy, and yeah, in three years. Is that correct?
We have, well, next year we have one rolling off, but that's only, uh, that's just about a million that's rolling off. Uh, the next one, it's not three years. It rolls off in 2034, and it's 7.2 million.
7.2 million?
Mm-hmm. That one ends in 2034.
Thank you. That's all I have, Commissioner.
Commissioner Giles.
When I saw this, this resolution coming through, Commissioner, what I do like about it is that the people in the city of Mount Juliet gets to decide. Because one of the questions that I asked when this whole thing came up, I asked, when you had, I'm not saying you, when the meetings were scheduled and the participants from those meetings were there, and they voiced their opinion, y'all got people's names or whatever, how many of those were true citizens of the city? We made mention tonight about, you know, other people use our infrastructure here that doesn't pay the city tax. So I know, you know, I've not had an overwhelming amount of people that was for this, but there again, they, they may be out there. I've not heard a lot of, of comments about it. I've heard probably more negative than I have positive. This way, it's on a referendum so that the actual citizens can say, we want this, we're willing to pay more city tax, et cetera, et cetera. Is that not what, what this would do? So I think it's, it, it puts it in the people's hands, the citizens' hands. So maybe I've read it wrong. Okay.
Commissioner Hefter.
So I got, it's just, I got mixed feelings on this. One, I think we were elected to make these, these decisions. That's my personal opinion. But, um, I think it is important to hear from the voters as well, and i.e. the citizens, sorry. The people that are going to be voting on this. The other piece of this, it's, it's not, which I would, as a citizen, I would, I would question, okay, $14 million is a bond that's going to cover the construction costs. The other piece of this, it's it's not, which I would, as a citizen, I would, I would question, okay, $14 million is a bond that's going to cover the construction costs. I think this is going to open up more questions than it is going to have answers. I think if we're prepared to put this on as a resolution, we need to know how are we going to fund the operational expenses? Is the operational expenses going to be covered by raising taxes? We don't know that. And I hope, and my goal is no taxes are going to be used to fund the operational expenses. Zero. I say we get corporate sponsorships, we partner with Vanderbilt or whoever to to fund the operational expenses. So we have to, I think if you're going to put this to the voters, I think you have to have those answers to those questions before, because they're they're only looking at half of it. They don't. I probably would vote against this because I don't know what the other variables are. I think I I agree that we need to, I agree, we need to push it down. I need, I believe we need to push this down a year as far as a decision on issuing a bond until all of those questions are answered. How are we going to pay for the operational expenses? I don't want to see contracts. I want to see long term commitments. I want to see everything already lined up in place on paper that's going to cover the operational expenses on this before we go and issue a bond. And there's just too many, to me, the biggest piece of this is is not the bond, because we know the hotel motel tax at $14 million will cover the cost. To me, the concern is the operational expense, which I heard at the workshop was half a million dollars plus. So I think there the private sectors, I think the corporate sponsorships are out there. I think we can get there. I think they'll be lining up the door to have their name put on the side of the building, but we just, we don't have those firm commitments right now. It's too. It's we're guessing as to how we're going to pay for the operational expense. Again, that's a big question mark for me that I need answered.
That's kind of the the point here was to force these these things to be addressed suitable that the voters understood what we what we were asking of them. And there's a lot of questions that, you know, I'd like to say to the voters, say, do you understand this and that and this, but under the Tennessee code that's referencing here only only applies to the bond itself. So but I do agree with what you just said there, that in order for the voter to cast a yes vote in the affirmative on there, I think they need to have that reasonable assurance that we've got a a plan long term on how we're going to pay for this, the operations. And if it's going to cost, I I think it's something that we we need to be able to explain to them what the, because I really want to know, I mean, if there's overwhelming support for this, well, then I say we give the people the best thing that we can do according to our budget constraints. If it's not being supported by the majority of the voters out there, then we just tap the brakes on it for a while and see if conditions change in the future. Vice Mayor?
So this is something that we can work on as a commission. I mean, honestly, if we're looking at just the $14 million and the land, this could be a motivator to to go back to these investors and see if there's a partnership, right, for investing in the land and $14 million, and then leave it up to these investors to cover the rest. But the problem that I'm going back to is the concern is that, you know, when we sat down and we looked at the original picture, right, the cost of the building to be able to hit all of those areas, which was a minimum of of eight lanes, I believe, is what I heard. In order to be able to look at some type of, you know, you know, some, you know, like for swim lanes, right, you know, for competition, there was that additional, you know, outside swimming pool option to be able to go maybe inside outside options. And then the building size, and then the walking track. There were so many things that we took out of it initially because we knew it was getting, you know, more and more expensive. So maybe this could be an option where we look at a partnership where we say, okay, as as a citizens, if they vote on this, they vote for the $14 million. It could be the partnership with the cities giving the land and the $14 million, and then we find somebody else like a Vanderbilt or whoever, Summit, to be able to go ahead and and reinvest the other 20, 25 million, and then we leave it up to them to be able to come up with the operational cost. That could be a good thing, you know, like we've seen it right now with what we just did with T Doc. You know, we came to the table and now look at it. We got a project that was not even on the table. Now it's been pushed up to getting some things moving. So this is an opportunity, I think, just again, thinking outside the box, what is it that we can do for our voters where we're not getting locked in on a 50 year maintenance contract of all this equipment and everything else. So. Anyways.
Commissioner Malley?
I think what we're witnessing, to be honest, is Mount Juliet politics, because I think your rec center is dead, people. So I would like to take this opportunity to unfortunately thank you to Sam Anderson, Steve Hall, Rob Porter, Colleen and Steve of Phoenix Builders. And everyone who spent their time on pro bono work. And which is obviously going to end up being a wasted time. Everything we did over the past year is wasted. So thanks to Ray Justice. I think everyone that gave their time on this pro pro bono did a fantastic job. They went over and beyond. And they helped. Without them, we could not have pulled all this together to present it in a work session. So I also would like to thank the Parks Department, the Parks Board, the Rec Center Committee, the press and the public for coming out and expressing your your wants and desires. And it was, the building was to be at no burden, no burden on taxpayers, funded by tourism. That's the building. So anyway. I just. This isn't going to happen.
Commissioner, I think that's that's a telling assessment, just because we sent it to the voters that it won't happen. But I'm going to make a motion that we close debate. Is there a second? All right, all in favor of closing debate and voting, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, with that. With that, all in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That does pass. Did we have that? And all right, then we will vote, we will rescind and vote. I'll call for the vote on the removal of the 14 million? Okay, all in favor of removing the 14 million, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. And back on the ordinance just as it was, please, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Nay. With that, we've completed our agenda, and without objection. We are adjourned.